Good morning, everyone. I'm Candace Payne, the Chair of this Commission. And every morning or every day we have a meeting, we start off with a Pledge of Allegiance. So let's do that here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, here we are again. A little slightly different cast of characters today. To my immediate left is Commissioner Tom Rolf. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning.
And to his left around the corner is Brandy Spangler, and she reminds us when we're out of line or in trouble. And then to her left, we have Lindsay Morgan, who is from our planning department. Morning, Lindsay. To my right is Andy Hunthausen, Commissioner-at-Large. Well, for 18 years, he's our historian. And from the county attorney's office, Nico Hash and Keegan Shea. And Mr. Roger Balls, who is our Chief Administrative Officer and person who really -- we all work together to keep it rolling along. Greetings. Okay. Reminder, we have a sign-up sheet right there on a little table on the other side of that railing, and we'd like everybody to write their name down and their phone number. And that way, if there's, you know, if we need to contact you or there's further information requests, we can find you. Start out this morning's meeting, Consent Action Items, presented by Mr. Roger Balls, and he will lead us down this adventure.
Thank you, Chair Payne. And Commissioners, you have three items on consent for consideration today. The first is Item 2A, United States Bureau of Reclamation's Federal Lands Transportation Program Grant Application Letter of Support. Staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is 2B, and it is Authorization to Submit Competitive Sealed Bid for the Purchase of One 50-Foot Length by 16-Foot Width HL-93 Steel Bridge. Staff recommends approval of that item. The next item, Commissioners, is Item 2C, Resolution 2025-36, Declaring County Property Surplus Property, and staff recommends approval of that item as well. Commissioners, that's all the consent action items for you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any comment from the Commission?
None here.
Do we have any questions of Jenny Chambers, who is out there? Nope, seeing none. Is there any public comment on these consent action items? Seeing none. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Consent Action Items 2A, B, and C, as explained by Roger Balls. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass this motion. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none. All in favor of approving this -- these three consent action items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign, passes unanimously. Now, action item 3A, the bid opening on the magnesium chloride supply, as presented by Jenny Chambers.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works Director. Today, we are going to be opening bids for magnesium chloride. This is to deliver approximately 700 tons of magnesium chloride to our Public Works bulk tank facility. The bulk delivery timeframe will range from June of 2025 to June 30th of 2026. So we try to get approximately 700 tons. We call and order these as we need to fill the tanks, and then we use those throughout the summer, as spring and fall seasons. So with that, we have one bid today to open. The bid is from Dustbusters of Evanston, Wyoming. Chair Payne, I think this is always the hardest part, is to actually open the envelope.
But you do it. That's -- you're obviously prepared for this heavy lifting.
The bid security is included. The bid is signed. The bid appears to be complete. This is a unit price-based bid. The estimated quantity, again, is 700 tons. The unit price is 175. Unit price is 175.75, which I'm wondering if that's a typo, so we'll have to get clarification on that. So 175.75 is the unit price for extended price of $123,025. So Chair Payne, we'd like to -- staff would like to take these -- this bid under review and go back to the office and look at it further to see if it meets our specification requirements, and then come back to the Board on June 26th with a recommendation for award.
And I assume you'll also check for your typo, make sure this...
Chair Payne, it may not be my typo. We just get clarification that, you know, that this bid is within our budget and our range and what we're expecting for the cost as well, and that the bidder didn't have a typo in this middle.
Okay, which is why it's a good idea to wait a little bit till we make the final Is there any public comment on this magnesium chloride bid? Seeing none. So we have a motion there, Andy.
Chair Payne. Yes, I would move that we ask staff to take the bid under advisement and bring a recommendation to this Commission on the 26th at our regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we ask our folks at the Public Works Department to take this bid under advisement and bring it back to us for a final decision on June 26th. All in -- is there any further discussion?
Chair Payne, I should have asked Director Chambers a question, if I could do that. I know it's not...
I suppose we'll do a special dispensation, as long as Ms. Chambers is willing. Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunthausen.
Just an opportunity to educate those that might be watching. Some may not know what magnesium chloride is used for, why do we use it, how extensively do we use it, and why that product versus something else.
Sure. Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunthausen. So magnesium chloride is used as either a dust suppression and also it is a road stabilizer. So for our gravel roads, we use it on some of our higher-traffic road to not only help with dust, but to also hold the soils and the gravel materials on that road during the season. It helps keep it stabilized over the year. There's other products that can be used. There's calcium chloride, there's other material. But magnesium chloride is one that works well in Montana, works well in our gravel soils in this particular location, and it's one that usually is a good cost for the product that we're getting as far as economically costly for the county to use. So that's why we go this route. We have a bulk tank facilities in hand. We have water tanks that are able to both supply water and also magnesium chloride. So we have -- the county road department applies the magnesium chloride themselves. We don't have to hire a contractor to also apply the material after we get it delivered. One thing to note, Chair Payne and Commissioner Hunthausen and Commissioner Rolf, as you guys are aware, that in the Public Works complex right now, we're in progress of trying to get our magnesium chloride tanks in place. Our old tanks are not in very good functionality. Our pumps are not working for those facilities. So with the ARPA money that you guys approved, we are putting new magnesium chloride tanks in hand. The delivery I indicated would be from June to June, June 25 to June 26. Knowing that we're a little bit behind this season, we probably won't be getting magnesium chloride until the later part of June, applied to our roads in the first part of July. So with this dry -- it has been out there. We are starting to get some more dust complaints across the county and folks asking when we're going to get magnesium chloride applied. So you guys might also be getting phone calls on that end as well. Just knowing we're trying to get the supply of the magnesium chloride, we also have to get the new tanks built and in place so that we can get this stuff delivered and we can get it on the ground. So we're about three, four weeks behind where we typically are in each season, but we're making great progress.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Chair Payne. And I knew the answers to those questions, but I thought, you know, there's probably some people out there that were wondering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ready to vote now.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Jenny, okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve this bid opening. No, wait a second. We're going to take this under advisement until such time, and it would be next Thursday, when it will be brought to us for a final approval. All in favor of this...
I believe that's two weeks, not next.
Is it two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
That's right. Today is the 12th, two weeks from today. Thank you.
26th.
The 26th, thank you. Tom, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed? This bid opening has been approved, and we will move on to our big, exciting -- this is the big thing in our job today. This is the Lewis and Clark County Growth Policy Update, as presented by Ms. Lindsay Morgan. And Rachel's not here today, so you're on your own there, lady.
I apologize for that. The computer went to sleep just as I walked up here. Lindsay Morgan, I'm a land use planner for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you'll be hearing the County Growth Policy Update presentation. And just to kind of give you an overview of what I want to talk about today, I'm going to go over what is a growth policy. I'm going to do an overview of the process and the plan itself, what's the future land use map, some additional comments that we've received since the Planning Board's public hearing, and then I'm going to have, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me. And then, following that, you would have a public hearing.
Thank you.
So what is a growth policy? A growth policy is a long-range, non-regulatory planning document that serves as a guidebook to manage future growth and change and to support public health, safety, and welfare by establishing a broad framework for detailed planning projects, capital investments, and land use regulations. It establishes community-driven principles, criteria, and guidelines for future decision-making. And although it does not mandate regulations, it does lay the legal and philosophical groundwork for future plans and regulations. Here is the project timeline, just briefly. In the fall of 2023, winter 2023, 2024, this was our foundations stage. The existing documents were reviewed, and a technical advisory committee was established for the project. This included staff from multiple departments and agencies, along with a variety of organizations. In the spring of 2024, this was the visioning stage. This is the first round of public engagement. We held six open houses throughout the county. During this time, we also had a survey and an interactive mapping tool that people could use, and we also held multiple stakeholder meetings, which included people from the agricultural community, builders, realtors, surveyors, developers, engineers, affordable housing groups, recreation groups, conservation groups, school district, healthcare, and so on. In the summer of 2024, this was the plan development stage. This is when the first draft of the document and future land use map were prepared, and at that time, we were doing internal review and edits of the document. In the fall of 2024, this is where we came out with the public working document. This was the first public working document, and round two of our public engagement process began at this point. We had three information sessions in the county, and those also included an open house. We also went out to the farmer's market, met with people, and then, following this process, there were revisions made to the document based on comments that we received. In the winter of 2024, we received the public hearing draft, and with that, we made additional, you know, minor edits to the document. We also, at that time, met with the city of Helena and made sure that we were -- had a coordinated effort in the urban area surrounding the city. The Planning Board held a public hearing on May 28th, and following their hearing, they recommended approval of the draft document in a vote of eight to zero, with amendments that were recommended by staff at that time. These amendments have been incorporated into the draft document that you have before you this morning. The Planning Board also recommended that the County Commission continue to explore issues specifically related to individual wells and water availability in areas that are supported solely by individual wells. Here's just a brief overview of the engagement opportunities that we had throughout this process. The policy imperatives, go ahead.
Chair Payne, can I ask a question? So about the public engagement, I'm really impressed with the number of opportunities and the ways that people had opportunity. Just that goes -- what we did, or what you've been doing, goes far and above what is required by, I don't know if it's in law, but when we engage the community, we probably only had to produce the document, put it out there, take public comment, and then get it to the Planning Board, and they have their hearing. That would all -- probably all we would be required to. But we went far and above, more than a year ahead of that hearing, engaging the community in all these different ways, correct? Just, it's just something I think is significant, and I want to point that out, that people had opportunity to participate.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunthausen, yes, we did go above and beyond. We just really wanted to hear from the public because this is our document, and we want to make sure that we incorporate, you know, all the different voices that we're hearing in the county.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Payne.
In another comment regarding that issue, I have been the county commissioner for nearly as long as either Tom or Andy, and I have attended some of these public meetings where people can come up and talk to the members of Lewis and Clark County staff, whichever problem we're trying to solve. Nobody shows up, and it's heartbreaking. We give them the opportunity, and, you know, I expected there to be a lot more people commenting, but they don't. So I hope you continue your efforts to involve our citizens and communities to help us with our future plans. It's kind of hard to plan something if you don't have anybody else adding to it. Tom, do you have anything?
Just, I was -- one of the comments we got from somebody, and I can't -- don't recall right now, indicated that only 90 people from the public had shown up at all these meetings that you've had. And it's got to be disappointing when you go through all this effort and staff puts a lot of time into something, and then not very many people show up. So I -- thanks for trying to get it out there, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. One thing I wanted to offer is we, you know, throughout this process, we also had that mapping tool, and we did receive a lot of written comments that came in. I couldn't tell you how many off the top of my head, but we did receive a number of written comments, and those may very well have come from people who didn't participate in the meetings. But, you know, at some of the open houses that we had, we did have, you know, good So we also, you know, in advertising for this, you know, meeting and for the Planning Board, you know, we sent out an email to over 350-plus people that requested, you know, that they be made aware of, you know, things, events that are happening related to this project. We also, you know, did social media, press release, notice in the newspaper, things like that. So we've been very actively trying to engage the community in this document. And with that, you know, with the information that we received, there are eight imperatives that serve as the foundational policy goals that this growth policy is trying to address. They were established through extensive community outreach, existing conditions research, county staff collaboration, and consultation with stakeholders. They're listed up here on the screen for you. Support housing attainability, preserve agriculture and working lands, safeguard culture, heritage, and rural character, create opportunities for strategic growth, protect water and natural resources, sustain and enhance public services and critical infrastructure, ensure sustainable recreation, and mitigate fire, flooding, and earthquake risks. So this document includes seven chapters. It begins with an introduction, followed by countywide vision and imperatives, existing conditions, countywide policies and actions, planning area vision and policies. Lewis and Clark County has six different planning areas: Helena Valley, Canyon Creek, Marysville, Indian Ferry, York, Lincoln, Augusta, and Wolf Creek, Craig. There's also a chapter specific to the future land use map and designations, and finally, there's an implementation strategy. When you look at this side, you can see that this policy or this document is packed with recommendations for incentives. There's, you know, information about grant writing or opportunities to get grants. There's also some specific planning area visions and policies that I mentioned. So you'll find, especially in chapters four and five, you'll see a policy, and then it will have actions that are associated with that. And in some cases, there might even be a toolkit to further help with implementing that policy. So with that, just briefly, these are some of the -- these are the main policies that would support housing attainability. It's about incentivizing affordable housing, density in strategic areas, ensuring predictability in the development process, and then also housing opportunities for all county residents. We also talk about sustaining and enhancing public services and critical infrastructure. There's multiple policies that go into this. It talks about transportation, stormwater, water sewer. Next would be preserving ag and working lands. We met with the ag folks on multiple occasions, really wanted to make sure that we listened to what they had to say and to incorporate or to include, you know, the policies that were very important to them. Protecting water and natural resources. You know, we've got five policies listed here. Ensuring sustainable recreation. Creating opportunities for strategic growth. Multiple policies listed here as well. And finally, mitigating fire, flooding, and earthquake risks. We have some, you know, different policies that we're looking at here as well. This is safeguarding culture, heritage, and rural character. And then that finally takes us to the future land use map. This is a non-regulatory guide. It does not reflect future zoning districts in the county. In some areas, land use designations are not intended to influence regulations. However, in the Helena Valley planning area, these designations could guide future regulatory changes where needed. The map and its associated designations have been informed by, you know, several key factors, and I've listed those on the screen. Community priorities and ideas about growth, development trends and current land uses, population trends and projections, existing infrastructure and conditions, public lands and recreation amenities, natural constraints, existing entitlements, and then other planning documents. We also made some changes with our coordination with the city of Helena within that urban Here is the future land use map, where you can see the entire county. You see the very bottom part of the screen, that that's the Helena Valley planning area. Apologize that it's not as clear as you'd like to see on the screen. It's clearer on the screen over here. But Helena Valley planning area, again, is one of the six planning areas. The rest of the areas have -- the rest of the areas do have a designation associated with them, but again, it's more of a softer designation in those areas, and there is not an intention to do any sort of zoning outside of that Helena Valley planning area. Those are just land use designations for essentially what's kind of existing out there already. This is the rural centers map. This is also shown on that future land use map. The rural centers are keystones of their rural communities. They have been identified for enhanced investment to help them cope with issues such as increased traffic or daily use that's driven by tourism. These are the designations. There's 11 of them. Some of these include density provisions, while others do not. Those with density provisions likely also have some sort of minimum lot size recommendation, which is something that's required under state law if you do want to have zoning in those areas. So again, following any questions that the Commission has for me this morning, a public hearing would be open to allow public input regarding the draft document. Staff is recommending that the Commission continue this hearing that you opened today until next Thursday, June 19th, at your regularly scheduled County Commission meeting at 9:00 a.m. in this location. At that meeting, I would be presenting to you a draft resolution of intention to adopt the County Growth Policy Update. I also would like to bring up that we have received some additional comments since the conclusion of the Planning Board meeting. One of those comments I provided to you this morning, three others have been included in your packet, and there was another comment that came in that Commissioner Payne provided me with this morning, so I have not had a chance to look at that. We did receive some comments from Kathy Masefield. She's with our Heritage Preservation Department. In her comments, she suggested some edits to, you know, punctuation, grammar. I have reviewed those, and there's just a few locations within the document, but I agree with those changes and would recommend that we incorporate them. I also have a few minor changes to the document related to those kinds of things. I do plan to provide you with those recommended changes at the next meeting that we would have before you, where this hearing would be continued to.
Excuse me. Lindsay, I have a question. So the changes you are proposing, which in your mind are relatively minor, and we're talking about postponing any decision on this until a week from today, and in the meantime, do we have any chance to look at those changes to make sure they are indeed minor? Because what's minor to you might not be minor to Tom.
Chair Payne, that is a great question, and yes, I will provide you with those in advance of the meeting, likely by the end of this week.
And what about the public? If they want to see those changes before they see us make a decision on this, how you put that on the website, or how's the best way to...
Chairman Payne...
...
Chairman Payne, we can certainly put information out there on the county's website. We will also be presenting those changes, and the public would be allowed to comment on those changes at the next meeting.
Before we actually decide to adopt this?
Correct. Next meeting, you would be looking at a resolution of intention to adopt. So, there would still be a continued public comment period following next Thursday. At least, my recommendation is to do that for a specified period of time, and then you would cut off public comment at some point, and then the Commission would meet again and do a final resolution to adopt.
Okay. Thank you. It sounds like it gives us enough time to...
Commissioner Payne.
Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that process. This is really, just for those that are watching or here in the room, this is the beginning of the Commission's process. So, there's already been all of this staff work out in the community, and then the planning board had their process and has had their process and made a recommendation to us. Now, this begins our process. So, today is an introduction, questions, listening to what the public might have to say. Next week, doing that again, and considering a resolution to open a comment period, or intention to adopt a growth policy, and then open a comment period for whatever period of time we want, whether it's a week, or a month, or whatever we decide to do. And after that comment period, then we meet again and take public comment and do all the things and make any changes that we want to change, to make. And then we consider a decision to adopt a growth policy. So, this is still probably sometime in mid to late July before we're at decision point. Correct? That's typically, if we follow what we've kind of done in the past or intend to do here.
Chairman Payne, Commissioner Huntzhausen. Yes, it's really up to the Commission how much time you would have, you know, for the public following next week's meeting to provide comments. But ideally, you would have a comment period end at a date specific. And then the Commission would meet on a date specific following that. That way, staff has time to review those comments and provide responses to those comments. I don't have a date specific to that for you today, but I will have a date, dates or options that you could consider at the June 19th meeting.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Still a long process to go through.
Yes. Tom, anything?
Nothing more.
Have we reached the point where I need to start asking for a public comment, for example?
Okay. Commissioner, I might have one more question for Lindsey, if you could.
Meanwhile, back at the ranch. Go for it.
Well, this is our time to ask questions.
It is.
Ms. Morgan, just a couple of things to clarify. I think I generally know the answers, but just wanted to talk about that. So, you mentioned the City of Helena, engaging with them and asking them questions, or making sure they're aware of what we're doing and partnering with them. I know that we've just entered into, recently entered into, a joint infrastructure study. And can you just talk a little bit about how some of those other processes might be included in our consideration here, and what's kind of happened to this point? You've met with them more than once on different issues. I just wanted to talk about our partnerships a little bit.
Okay. Chair Payne and Commissioner Huntzhausen. Yes, so, we've been working with the City of Helena on a few different projects. One, we've, you know, had that coordinated effort with the county growth policy. We have gone to some of the meetings that they've had and engaged in their public process regarding their land use plan update. They have come to some of our processes. I believe we even have City of Helena staff here this morning for this Commission meeting. We wanted to make sure that we had a coordinated effort within that urban standards boundary. That's the area where the City of Helena could see extending infrastructure and annexing properties. And so, we worked with the city, had, I believe, at least two meetings where we were communicated back and forth about, okay, what about this? Want to make sure that we were in lockstep with each other. The maps are not exactly the same, but they are not at odds with each other. We made sure, we looked at definitions for land use designations and things like that, and they were great to work with. We are also working with them on a joint infrastructure study, which includes that urban area. And that's looking at extensions of sewer, water. There's also transportation, stormwater, and solid waste. So, we're looking at that area right now. We just received a draft existing conditions report for that study. We provided our input on that, as well as the City of Helena provided input on that. And we have not received the final document back, but that is something that we're working on together to try and figure out how to address that area. We've got a lot of existing infrastructure out there, and, yeah.
Thank you very much.
A question similar to this. Do, I know we've worked with the City of Helena. What about the City of East Helena? I mean, they're kind of in the same, do you talk to them? Are they part of this plan?
So, Chair Payne, yes, that's a very good question. So, East Helena has been very involved in this process as well, and we've provided them with a lot of comments regarding the growth policy update. The joint infrastructure study, they have not been involved in because it's the urban area that is around the City of Helena. The City of East Helena, in the growth policy, we talk about them establishing a similar type boundary where we could work with them in their boundary adjacent to the City of East Helena. But they do not currently have an urban standards boundary.
Does, does the boundary of Helena butt up against the, what will be, or is the boundary of East Helena? So, there's not a parcel of land in there that's not included in either? This is meeting each other?
So, Chair Payne, they do abut each other on the east side. I believe it's, you know, on the south side of Highway 12. They might abut as well north of Highway 12. But they're, the urban standards boundary that we have does butt up to the City of East Helena in some locations, but it's the City of Helena's urban standards boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Payne, I might go ahead and ask a couple of questions. You know, you've put a high prominence on supporting housing affordability. And there's a perception that each restriction and regulation increases the cost of housing. And so, have you been able to kind of assign what those costs might be? Is that a correct perception? Is there, is there, how do we talk with people that have that perception?
So, in the, in the document, on page 39, it talks about the housing costs, kind of what housing costs have been, starting in 2018 through, I think, 2023. So, it goes over the different prices. It looks like, you know, it peaked around 2020. The county did have some zoning regulations that were adopted at the, at the end of 2020, but a minimum lot size requirement didn't go into effect until, I believe, 2022. You'll see that that home price, that peak, was around 2020. So, that was kind of in advance of any sort of zoning regulations, and it's been declining to some extent since, still high. The, you know, housing attainability is one of our concerns, and supporting it is listed in the document as one of the eight imperatives. Incentives have been provided in the document, and the goal is to kind of attack this issue from multiple fronts. It's not really a one-dimensional problem. The county, you know, some of the comments that we received since the planning board meeting talked about, the county doesn't allow for clustering. The county does allow for clustering currently at that 10-acre density. What that means is that you could create much smaller lots than 10 acres, as long as you had a larger lot that would offset it and allow for that to be, you know, that density or average of 10-acre lots. That's something that we had received, I believe it was in a comment from Ms. Cotton. The county also allows for planned developments in those rural areas. So, the reason for the rural area was based on water availability, for the most part. The roads weren't in good condition, and then also there were concerns with fire protection. So, we had those three main issues. And so, in June of '22, the Commission met and adopted planned development standards. And essentially, that says, okay, if a person is looking to develop in the rural area at a higher density, when they develop in that area, if they can mitigate the constraints related to water availability, roads, and fire protection, the county commission can allow them to develop at a higher density in those areas. I know that was a concern that had been brought up. The draft future land use is really designed to give us better outcomes. It's not taking anything away from properties. If you remember, the Helena Valley Area Plan kind of laid out, there's a rural designation, a transitional, and a suburban designation. The zoning then was adopted in 2020. It laid out that rural designation in those areas. This future land use map looked at those, you know, those areas where the zoning is existing, the rural, the transitional, the urban, and said, okay, some of these areas, maybe they should be suburban residential and not rural residential. So, this future land use map actually changes some of that, you know, rural designation to like a suburban, which would allow for higher densities. So, you know, we've updated that as well, kind of targeted some areas that we felt maybe didn't need to be within that rural designation. I don't know if that helps you?
You bet. And possible follow-up, if I might. I think it's really important to try to keep prices down for folks, particularly for folks that are buying their first home, and, or maybe folks that have had some financial difficulties and trying to get into something, and, you know, for, that they just can't afford the $5,000, $6,000, $700,000 home, and that seems to be so prevalent now. So, and I've had some, I've struggled with this, this idea of limiting, you know, in some of our zoning areas, I've been opposed to acreage limits on development. It's a 10-acre specifically. Talk that, you know, tell me how you're dealing with that.
So, Chair Payne and Commissioner Rolf, one of the things I wanted to bring up is, you'll note that that section of chapter four regarding, it states, "Supporting housing attainability." We were careful with the language there because affordable housing has a specific definition, and we wanted to make sure that it didn't just include affordable housing, but that it was more about attainable housing for all. So, that was something that was carefully worded in the document. So, there is, like, you know, there are some policies that talk about specifically affordable housing, but they also talk about housing attainability to kind of capture more than just, you know, beyond that definition of affordable housing. So, again, the 10-acre density was something that was presented in that Helena Valley Area Plan in 2016. It was just a detailed look at the Helena Valley Planning Area, and there were five key issues that were looked at. Flooding, water availability, you know, wastewater treatment, roads, and fire protection. And so, with that, in 2016, there was, you know, some mapping done based on those five key issues to kind of determine, you know, where, where should a rural area be versus a transitional area versus the urban area? The urban area was pretty easy to determine because we followed, you know, where the City of Helena, you know, wanted to have that urban area extended. So, we just, you know, used their same boundary. The transitional area really follows outside of that urban area, but it's within that Helena Valley alluvial aquifer where we know that there's likely water available. Then there's the rural area. Now, in some areas, in most areas, it's more of a bedrock or a tertiary aquifer, so you're not certain, you know, is there enough water available? Are we drawing down the well from my neighbor? You know, we're not sure what's happening in those areas. We also looked at the area that's southwest of Lake Helena, which actually has a high water table. So, there's plenty of water there, it's just, you know, an issue for septic systems. So, we looked at a variety of different issues, and so the mapping was based on those constraints or those existing conditions that we found in the Helena Valley Planning Area. And so, that's how that transitional area versus that rural area was established. So, you know, again, it looked at, you know, the roads and so on. Then with this future land use map, and it was kind of decided based on those aquifers at that time, that a 10-acre, or in some cases, even a 20-acre density made more sense. But it was ultimately decided that it would be a 10-acre density out in those areas. But with that, we didn't want to say, this is just a blanket restriction. This is, you know, everything out here has to be exactly this. So, we allowed for the clustering options when the zoning was done in 2020. And then in 2022, the Commissioners added in that planned development process that essentially says, look, you might be out in this rural area, but you have shown that you do have adequate water available, and it doesn't appear that you're going to be affecting your neighbors, and your roads are actually in pretty good condition out here. They meet, you know, this threshold. Doesn't have to be this county standard, but it has to meet a certain threshold, and that fire protection can be adequately addressed. And with that, someone can go through a process. Ultimately, the county commission can decide to, you know, do, you know, much smaller lots. You can do a much higher-density project. You could ask for multiple uses on a property, those kinds of things. So, the county commission at that time allowed for that process. And this draft document supports the continuing doing those things. It also looked, that future land use map, we looked at those areas and said, you know what? This actually could be suburban residential. Doesn't need to be this rural residential ag. So, we did carefully look at that.
And another follow-up, if I might. We've got a pretty good part of our central valley that is part of a floodplain. And in order to get, if I understand it right, in order to get flood insurance for people who live in that area, there is a restriction on further development. They can't, new buildings going up. How does, how does this deal with that?
So, Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, this document does talk about flooding, and there are some incentives in here that talk about mainly in the urban, the urban area, there really, there are no density restrictions. But in the suburban, there are some discussions about incentives, getting people to build away from the floodplain. In general, this is when someone's not going through like a subdivision review process. This is just in general, making sure that they, you know, the further they develop away from, or the floodplain, the better. So, there's some incentives related to that when it comes to subdivision review. It's clear in there that we don't want to see people creating lots where you can only build in the floodplain. They have to create lots that are buildable outside of it. But there is, there are also some incentives for people building further away from the floodplain in the draft document.
Okay. Thank you. Another question, if I might.
Go for it, Tom.
There's a real perception, and as I talk to developers, that it's far harder to get anything done within the city boundary of Helena, that East Helena is more receptive towards more, more development. And in fact, I've had a couple of developers say, I never want to do anything inside the City of Helena again because it was such a complicated, difficult thing. And what, what do we do as the city grows to make it? Talk to me a little bit more about how we, how we deal with, because the City of Helena is going to grow. City of East Helena, I think, is going to maybe really grow. And, and how do we, how do we deal with that and still keep it affordable for, for people who can't afford the expensive homes?
Chair Payne and Commissioner Rolf? Chair Payne and Commissioner Rolf, so yes, you are correct. East Helena has some, some larger projects coming in right now, creating, you know, numerous lots. The city of Helena, you know, I haven't worked directly with them on a specific project, but we are working with them on that urban standards boundary. The idea is, is that some of those properties that are closer to the city limit boundaries, those would likely be annexed into the city when they're developed or for other reasons. They might be annexed into the city. When you get a little bit further away from the city limits, the idea is that, you know, people, if, if there was a subdivision happening, for example, and that in our future updated subdivision regulations, staff is recommending that we have projects that meet city requirements that are within that urban area. That way, when those projects are annexed into the city, it's more of a seamless annexation process. That's some of the issues that we've experienced or the city's experienced in the past is annexing properties that don't come close to meeting city standards. They might have, you know, septic systems, they may not have sidewalks, those kinds of things. So we're looking to make that process more seamless. The city of Helena, or with our draft subdivision regulations update, what we are trying to do, and again, the commission hasn't seen this yet, so it's going to be up to the commission what you decide to do, but the recommendation is, is that we would have high-density development standards, which would be slightly different from medium-density development standards, which would be different from low-density development standards. Right now, Lewis and Clark County only has one set of development standards. And so in some cases, you might see a high-density project with really narrow roads and large burrow ditches. So we want to refrain from, from doing those kinds of things in the future, but that's what our, our current regulations allow. So our plan is to update the subdivision regulations to address that. And this document does talk about that as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all the questions I've got right now.
Gosh, you guys are so well-prepared for this. I, I had a question too, Lindsay. I'm, I've talked to some contractors also, and, you know, they're saying, let us build, let us build. But I'm also very concerned about the haphazardness of letting it just go. I don't think that is in the long-term best interests of our community. We need to have some, it, it's like doing economic planning for my household. Okay, let's see. We could just go out and, you know, we'll put it on our credit card and hope somebody will pay for it down the roadways. But right now, I really, really need to have a, a new four-wheeler so my husband can. Okay, fine, that's fine for now, but what happens next winter when you can't pay your heat bill? And that's a very small part of, of the county and the planning area around the city. We need to have a plan and that's what you're trying to do. And it may not be perfect, but it's, it's probably, it's better than nothing and people are having a chance to, so that it's, we're all working on this together. And you're doing the best you can. So I, it's, I look at county, other counties in Montana that have, they don't appear to have any zoning, they don't appear to have any planning. And I, I don't think that's in our best interest. If, if this is going to be a civilized community, it needs to have, you do not want to have the hog farm right next to the, the children's playground. And you also don't want to have the introduction of sewage and non-maintenance of the septic systems and all of a sudden it is impacting our groundwater. The other thing that we need to pay attention to, and this is not my area of expertise, but I've talked to some people who, because a building was built in not only the floodplain, but in the flood zone, so it's, it's going to flood.
Floodway.
The floodway, thank you. And if that goes on, then FEMA, the federal, it's a, the governmental flooding insurance place. So if you've got a really serious flooding problem, they step in and help us recover. By allowing people to build in that floodway, we can jeopardize our ability to become, you know, to get the benefits of the federal flood insurance. And these are all things we need to look at that will influence us into making a long-term plan. And I guess that wasn't a question, that was just.
And Chairman Payne, I just wanted to offer that it is prohibited to develop in the flood plain, floodway.
Floodway?
Yes.
Okay. And so it isn't just us being, controlling, it's, this is the law.
Yeah, we have a floodplain ordinance in Lewis and Clark County, and so developing in the floodway, which has been mapped, is prohibited.
Is there anything else you'd care to inform us on here, Lindsay?
Chair Payne, just available for any other questions you might have.
Any further questions? Gentlemen? Not at the moment. So is this a point I can ask for public comment? Public comment?
Greetings, Commissioners, staff and public. My name is Brian Coplin.
You can spell your last name, make sure we get it right.
Sure. C-O-P-L-I-N. I'm going to offer a different perspective here, different viewpoint. When we were talking about the community participation in these events and stuff like that, a lot of the people in the community, some of them don't have transportation, so they're not going to be able to get to these places. Some of them don't have telephones, so they're not going to be able to, to, you know, to keep up with these events and to get there. Some of these people, you know, they may not have computer literacy to understand how to, the modern world works or doesn't work. Some of these people, you know, they have to prepare their food for their kids. You know, some of these other people are, you know, they're dealing with the lives that they're dealing now, so they're not able to participate with a lot of these things. And there's not a lot of people out there like me that kind of, you know, jump in the middle of everything and, and are involved in all these things. And because of health issues, they don't have the energy, they don't have the time in their schedules to, to be at these meetings. They'd like to participate because, I mean, we have a system that, let's look at it as if it's a potholes in the road, okay? You know, the people that are driving those roads, they're the ones that know where the potholes are. And a lot of these people are coming to me because I do advocacy. I'm in the front lines on the trenches every day, taking people to the hospital, into the housing. So, you know, I, I'm pretty aware of a lot of these problems and it's just the people that are coming up to me and talking to me that I'm taking notes for and I'm putting into my data system to know what the trends are, of what's wrong and what's right. You know, they're coming up and they're saying they're not being listened to, that they're not being heard, that the, the leadership is stuck in a box and they're not willing to come out of the box. I, I watch a lot of organizations come to get grants. They talk about all their successes. They don't talk about their failures. You don't hear about their failures. Our community doesn't want to talk about our failures. And the first step in recovery, like in a drug addiction, the very first step to healing and health is admitting that there is a problem. And we've got a lot of problems in our community where there's a lot of gaps. Tuesday, when I was here, there was a lot of organizations talking about filling those gaps. And that's the problem, is there's all this talk, but there's not actually actions occurring in the system. And people are falling through the cracks. So that's why a lot of the way, the reason why they're not able to participate and we're not able to actually hear which roads have all these potholes are, so that we can coordinate care to fill in those potholes to resolve those problems. So a lot of what's happening in our communities is we get these little teeny problems that just sit there and they rot and they become serious problems. So that's the reason why, you know, if we can fill in some of those gaps, to get those people that we want to participate, so that they're enabled to participate, then we will see that, that change. The 28th and the 29th, I was at what was called a sequential intercept mapping conference and it was prepared by the state. And they do this about every 10 years from these cycles. And the definition of insanity is doing the exact same thing in the exact same way and expecting different results. So we need to actually look at these cycles and this part of this planning session should be included in all this thing. All this information should be shared between all the participants. It's just, we're not getting the people to the table. For that sequential intercept mapping, they had availability for 100 people and only 66 showed up. And, and this was about cutting down on our recidivism rate and, and making things work and so that people, you know, that when people complain about a problem, we actually work together and pull in the components that we need to fix that problem. So that's my, what, my, my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, Brian. Is there any other public comment on this matter?
My name is John Heron. I reside at 2855 Sundown Road in Helena. Been a lifelong Helena resident, lived in LA, so I know the big city too. It's hard to capitalize all the things that I'd like to talk about and not get off into the weeds too much, but I guess the overall, I think this is a great deal to have a growth policy update, should have probably been done 10 years ago, but, because I think it's mandated every 10 years, every five years, the county is supposed to look at their growth policy and make sure it's current. And I've never seen any milestones or steps proving that the county's compliant with the state regulations. But here we are, and we finally have it. All in all, I think the consultants were very receptive, the outreach programs, albeit that the attendance wasn't nearly what it should have been. And part of that, I think, is that I think the county needs to do a little bit better announcements over the TV and through newspapers and newspapers are less of a deal as media, social media. Because I'm not sure that the people are really getting the idea that they can attend something happening in their community. I went up to Lincoln and there was probably 10 people there. I missed the ones in Helena because I didn't even know about them. So I had to drive to Lincoln just to get with the consultant and the staff to, to express some of my concerns. So I, if, especially for the next phase of this, where we look at the meat where it really is, is in subdivision regulations that are supposed to be coming out here in the next months or so, and maybe looking at some type of planning board meeting sometime in the end of the summer, is according to Lindsay's projections. That is probably where you'll see a lot more people being more actively involved because that's where a lot of the real hard, hard issues are going to be looked at and how they, how they're written and how they're implemented is going to be a real important thing for how development goes. But to back, backstop this whole thing is that I've got 17 years with the state of Montana, 10 years in DEQ, five years in subdivision review, where I issued 400 permits on subdivisions. And so I know the, know what it is to look at regulations and I know what it is to get people through the regulations. Also have been involved in the last 10, 15 years, real estate improvements of apartments to commercial upgrades to buildings and stuff like that, but also done four, tried to do four subdivisions. We're currently working on my four subdivisions through this county. Been in six different lawsuits with the county over zoning and subdivision review regulations. And that has been a very upsetting and I guess almost financially crippling experience. I've won 650, well, closer to $750,000 of county taxpayers' money in lawsuits, but in the process, it almost bankrupted me a couple of times. And I wouldn't recommend it to anybody because it gave, made for a lot of sleepless nights and, you know, worry that I shouldn't have had gone through. That, that basically was because the county went rogue and basically tried to control illegally, in some cases proven in court over and over, of trying to restrict growth, especially in the rural areas, by making costly improvements that targeted development. And that mainly was the zoning regulations that Mike Fesspan and I fought in 2004, 2005. We basically won in court and then went to the, all the way to the Supreme Court. Followed that with a series of 10 different lawsuits, eight of which were involved off-site roads where the county was trying to force developers to pay 100% of the cost for roads off-site, which the court basically remanded it. It went from 2005 with the Christiansen case, and he just happened to have left, but he was a lead case and he had 12 lots on the first phase of his development, which was on Lake Helena Road, as it's on the east shore of, of Lake Helena. And nothing was said about doing improvements to Lake Helena Road in the second phase. He comes in with same essentially footprint, same development. Oh, you've got to pay 100% of the cost for that off-site road, which is a county road. Well, that was obvious that that was going to fail. I mean, why anybody, okay, we had Ed Tinsley and Mike Murray were county commissioners at the time, and then had Kelly Blake as the planning head. They were insistent on being stupid and they cost us taxpayers $6 million. And that started a whole 10-year cycle of lawsuits and I was involved in two of them. One of them, I was conditionally approved for a 12-lot subdivision upon Emerald Ridge, east of, of Foxwoods Golf Course. And luckily I was able to, to complete that subdivision and I ended up with a net profit of around $250,000. I put $100,000 in two other parcels of land. The second one, the, the second lawsuit, the second off-site lawsuit ended up dragging out until 2015, about six, nine years of hell. And my partner and I won $650,000 in a settlement. We didn't have to go to court because Christiansen's case cost the county taxpayers $300,000 to settle with Christiansen and $467,000, $467,000 in legal fees. Jerry Christiansen was the next one that came up. County said you had to pay 100% of his subdivision on the corner of Montana out of East Helena and Canyon Ferry Road, which is now a bunch of houses. Unfortunately, Jerry Christiansen's passed away, or Jerry, I'm sorry, saying Christiansen, Jerry Hamlin. 100% of the cost to improve Montana into East Helena. He says, no, I don't, I'm only 50%. So that, at the court, he was seeking 500 million, or $5 million in damages. The judge Sherlock says, well, geez, this is a poor county taxpayers, I'm only going to give you 200, 2.5 million. He ended up being in lawsuits over water rights for his thing, which, because he had not used, kept using the water rights, he said to me that he ended up spending $11 million trying to get that subdivision through. Eventually got half the water rights and was able to do the subdivision, which is now a bunch of nice houses on that corner. The problem that I see is that the county is essentially somewhat perpetuating this with this document in the fact that it says that rural growth is bad and densification is the only solution, which quite frankly, it happens any- is the only solution, which quite frankly, it happens anyway. You look at any growth across the world and densification happens naturally and it's organic because as communities grow, generally the land prices go up. So in order to make the economics of that work, not only for regulations that the county is passing, but just for the economics of building all the infrastructure. For instance, on my 13-lot subdivision, I'm working on Silver City, it's going to cost me $250,000 to do the roads. It's going to cost me around $250,000 to bring power in. That's a half a million dollars. Most people don't have that sitting around and that's just for 13 lots. And if I would have dropped below 2.5 acres, which is the county threshold, I would supposedly have to pave the roads, which doubles the cost. So I stuck with a two and a half acre or greater, just to avoid that issue. The point being that this county's subdivision regulations and zoning regulations have severely restricted the supply of, what is it? I'm trying to think of the term, normal housing and affordable housing in the county. I'll give you specifics of what that is. First off, in the subdivision regulations, they were requiring that anytime you ended up having a road that comes into it that is over 10% of the traffic, that you have to pay your proportionate share. Well, let's say you're on a county road, let's say Lake Helena Drive and you're, or some other road that's a smaller segment, that can be a deal killer right there in itself because you are the only one paying where your neighbors already have their house, they're already paid for, they've already paid their mortgage down and they don't have to contribute to that road. Neither does the county. And Judge Sherlock made a landmark decision in the remand decision when they came back. County Commissioner said it was only 7%. Judge Sherlock asked the county, okay, where's the 93% to fix the rest of the road? And what is your mechanism for getting that money? And when is your timetable? County had no answer for any of it. They said basically, we have no mechanisms to get our 93%. So you go, who is paying that barrier? The new guy only. That drives up the cost to the, well, it basically prevents a lot of houses being built. That's one issue. Second issue is internal roads, as I said, having to pave roads less than two and a half acres or if you exceed 40 lots. 40 lots makes sense because generally as you get in economies of scale, if you go above 40 lots, you can probably afford to pave the roads. But if you drop less than two and a half acres and you have five lots you're creating, you have to go through the variance process. And my experience has been that the variance process is, I want to use all the expletives that I could, but it's not a fun and not a guarantee that you're going to get it. So you have risk. Risk that you could say, well, no, I'm going to go to Jefferson County. I'm going to go to Broadwater County. I'm going to go someplace else where I don't have to deal with the uncertainty that Lewis and Clark County has made a kind of like their norm. You don't know what you're going to get when you start and that's not right. Again, this supposedly is giving us a blueprint and that's good, but if you read it, and in fact, I am good friends with Andrew Thomas, who's a Carroll College professor. I could go on and on about his, all of his qualifications. He's got two different, he's got an accounting and business bachelor's and a PhD. He has a master's and a PhD in, what is it, economics and, oh no, the first one was political science and then he's got also a doctorate in legal law. So he knows all the aspects of this. He wrote a six-page in November 2nd submitted to the county about densification and the problems that it doesn't really solve issues. And yet you look at the document and I can probably pick out 20 places where the county said densification is the way we need to go. Can I say this very, very clearly? It doesn't work. It does not. 10-acre track size and what started out, quite frankly, back in 2000, the reason that we had over 200, 300 people testify, over 1,800 pages of written testimony fighting the zoning, is it started at 120-acre tracks down Spokane Creek Road, 120-acre track minimum. Why? Whoever even thought that was something that was halfway reasonable, yet the county would not back off. Then they said 20-acre tracks in all timbered areas and 10-acre tracks in all the grassland areas. Finally, by all that opposition, we got 10-acre tracks, which was where it's still obscene. Why do we need 10 acres? All that does is create, and I'll give you a very quick example. My family farm is on Flowery Lane, which basically is just off of Lake York Road, about three minutes from the airport. And Flowery Lane connects there into Sierra Road and it's a bad road, it's owned by the county and it's really rough. On the right-hand side, a rich oil executive, I think he's probably the owner of something very, very profitable because he has taken what we used to do is flood irrigation on that irrigated alfalfa fields and put in a nice big sprinkler, but he has four $150,000 John Deere tractors with encased thing. And I don't know, he must have other lands he's doing because there's no reason you'd need more. We used to do that same property and mow it and stuff like that with just crappy old little tractors. The point being is that he's choosing to stay in agriculture and is very productive and the hay is awesome, but I don't know, I'm not sure it's that much greater than what we were raising when we had a family. Across the road is, I'm trying to think of the fellow's name that owns it now, but basically now he's sold 10, 20-acre tracks to people and they're putting one house, one house on that road, which is only like one mile from York Road. York Road is going to get improved hopefully by the state secondary roads. It's an ideal place to have put 100 houses, okay, instead of five, you know? That's what we have is you guys are saying, ooh, we want that, or you have to go through these other steps. Well, you have to go through those other steps. Anyway, DNRC is and DEQ require that you prove that you have adequate wastewater and you have adequate water. A lot of litigations have happened over the time of senior water rights and I think that the logger jam that happened with DNRC in the last year is finally getting settled out and I think we can start moving forward as far as having water rights, the exempt water rights issue is kind of like settled. That is stopped some, but in large, affordable housing in Helena and the Helena Valley in particular, has been restricted by the perception that it's not a good place to invest as far as a developer. That is because of these issues, these barriers, saying that, okay, you've got to do extra steps, you've got to do a plan, you've got to prove that your roads will meet the durability issues. I worked in the geotechnical section for a year and a half and I don't really know what that standard is, but essentially I'm guessing what it means is that you have to have ability to bring in cement trucks to put in foundations. What happens if it doesn't? So then you're on the tag for that road. Well, your neighbor doesn't, he just built his house and he didn't have to do that. I think that there's other ways that we could be looking at. Oh, and then here's another thing I think I want to really emphasize too. Look at Salt Lake City, it's like two, three million people. That's 425 miles from here. Up in Alberta, you've got Calgary, that's two, three million people. And we're sitting here at 70,000 on the interstate that goes right between the two. And with global warming, we are in what I call, and I've done two years with the research, deep, deep, deep into it, probably way beyond what I should have reasonably done, we're in a Goldilocks zone. There will be people coming here, there already are people coming here. But you look at what the last three years, and I look at this growth policy and it stops at 22 with what we were doing as far as growth. In the last three years, what I've seen, what we're building is apartments. Big, huge apartments, three-story, five-story, look at what's happening out on Mountain Meadows right now, right next to the Blue Cross Bushill Building. I'm not sure really what those buildings are going to be, but it looks like they're apartment buildings, right? Right? And this document says that 20-some-odd percent, 27% of the population is renters. But if I did a Google search and I came up with, they said it was like more like 48% of the people are renters. I'm not sure, I'm thinking in part that between the last three years, we've driven more and more people into renters. The problem with being a renter is you never own real estate and when you get to the end of your life, your major asset to keep you in assisted living is a house. And if you don't have a house, you're, what are you going to do? You're going to just die in your home. So it does have consequences that we're forcing densification into rentals, high-density rentals, which we need, obviously we need. But if you look at the occupancy, those buildings are renting for 1,500 for a one-bedroom. I think it's 1,800 for a two-bedroom and it goes to 2,500 for a three-bedroom. They're not very full and they're having trouble with occupancy just because, so what are the people doing? So here's two things that I would recommend. One is that we focus on building trailer parks like crazy, advocate that we have densification in the rural areas or wherever it makes sense. Because if a person could at least own a trailer and rent a lot, at least at some point in time, they could maybe sell that and get into a house. Otherwise, they'll never get ahead. And these are kids, younger people, people on fixed income that need a break and they're getting shoved to the gutter. The final thing too is that, and if you look at the way cities grow, just as Lindsey was somewhat indicated, you've got these little centers. I'm going to use Bob's Valley Market on North Montana and Lincoln Road as an example. Now they have a hardware store, they have a coffee shops, they have little shops. Those become little regional centers that people don't have to drive into Helena to get food, all right? And those will naturally grow anyway. You can look at Winston, you can look at Helena, I mean, East Helena, you can look at Montana City, you can look at Canyon Creek, you can look at Wolf Creek. All of those centers are going to naturally grow. Do we need to dictate all this densification thing? No. And I have really heartburn on the idea of, what is it called where you, cluster development. It's the stupidest idea in the world because you leave a bunch of vacant land and then 10, 20 years later you go, oh, oops, we made a mistake, let's put some more houses on it. What the hell did that accomplish? Nothing. It's ridiculous. We need to densify and densification will happen organically. We need as a county to loosen up on this whole idea. Roads, oh, and the last thing is fire protection and I'm super glad that this growth policy finally, and it says, the county is considering not forcing each individual house, new house to have fire protection. And I'll give you one example that happened probably about seven years ago now. It's called the Miles Subdivision. Andy, you were probably part of this whole thing. You remember the Miles Subdivision? An older fellow on Hart Lane had a four-acre tract of land. He was disabled and he wanted to sell two acres to his son to split it in half, okay? The county said, okay, the county regulations said, you have to be within one mile of a fire station that's ample or a water source ample to protect your property. It's on Hart Lane, it's two miles to the East Valley or the Lakeside Fire Station, okay? But because Lakeside Fire Station is on the west side of York Road and this property's over there, oh, we can't go across that road. Why? Oh, it's two miles. Oh. So what happened is one year delay, that house probably went up 10% in costs. I don't know really what's happened with those folks because I've never talked to them, but that whole year delay, they had to go over to the Heron Creek subdivision, make an agreement to pay, I don't know what the agreement was, but essentially to use their water supply, which is two miles away. What's the difference? Why couldn't they have used the Lakeside Fire Station? Well, it's because it's across this road, which is again, that's a stupid regulation. They get it done, turns out Heron Creek subdivision's water supply system didn't work. So there's another six months delay, so they had to go in and fix it to make it work. I don't know why it wasn't working, but the long and short of it is, we don't need, in a grassland area with low fire risk, every new subdivision having a 30,000-gallon mini gas station, minimum 250 gallons a minute for two-hour supply, which by the way, can trigger three-phase power. Three-phase power is not available in a lot of places in the county. It is a barrier. It's stupid. It's just another crazy thing. So what the growth policy says is the county is considering building regional fire centers. I've been advocating that for the last 10 years, maybe longer. Why has the county not done something about that and fixed the subdivision regs? So again, that barrier right there, who can afford $70,000 for one lot? Or $100,000 now probably to put in a mini gas station in the ground. And if you put more houses, that number keeps going up. Not 200, you need 500 gallons a minute. The fire guys said, we don't want to connect up to it because we can't guarantee the water in that system. Some of them actually had a lock on them they couldn't get to. And they said that if they don't have a pump system with this three-phase power, then they'd have to set a fire truck there to service the other trucks and they don't want to do that. Well, if that's a barrier, I think the fire district should have a pump system that's on a trailer that's capable of that and they can just plop it any place they want and that fixes that problem, either at a pond or a withdrawn well. Why do they need to tie up a fire truck? So that seemed stupid again. Why not, and by the way, back to the lawsuit basis of this. It's discrimination. It is also arbitrary and capricious unless you can, in the court of law, if you cannot prove that you're basically on solid footing, that meaning the county, then you're in trouble. We've proved that over and over again with all these lawsuits that have happened in the last 20 years against the county. We're not unique. That's happened in Missoula, that's happened all over the United States. The problem with forcing only the new guy to make costly improvements that the other folks do not have to do, that's where you're going to get in trouble. So this whole fire thing, I'm surprised that the county hasn't gotten sued on it yet. It should have been a class action lawsuit. Also should have been a class action lawsuit on the 10-acre tractor situation and all this stuff. Because basically it puts a cloud over every parcel of land that's rural out there right now. It is, it is true. I have asked Greg McAnally three times, just recently, three weeks ago. In the lawsuit for Christiansen's case in the discovery part, the county was required to produce an accounting of how many lots were being created, what kind of systems, water and supply. I'm not sure, I can't remember what's all on that chart. I'm not sure, I can't remember what's all on that chart. And I've asked Greg three times, why hasn't the county tracked it? Because nobody can tell me how many lots are being created in the west side of the Helena Valley or over here next to East Helena or wherever. He says, well, you can go do that. That's not my job. And that should have been part of this whole growth policy. Because nobody can say, and I can guarantee you, I watch your commission hearings and I see almost zero rural property being subdivided except for Kim Smith doing five-acre exemption, five-acre exemption and blah, blah, blah. He's the only one doing them. And he's smart. He knows what he's doing. He's got good people that are advising him. But otherwise, I don't see any of this going on. How do we supply another 8,500 houses in the next 20 years? City Helena doesn't allow hardly anybody to connect in. They won't extend it. In fact, Derek Brown, when he was county commissioner, when they were looking at doing the upgrade on the police academy on Sierra Road, it was going to be around a million dollars to upgrade their sewer system. He says, well, why don't we put a branch down Sierra Road and start connecting in? Well, stepping back, there was a subdivision right across from the Brickley-Carroll Creek from my grandparents' ranch. It was a 100-acre, 100-lot subdivision. It got denied, got sued, you know, it was something, I think it was actually rather arbitrary, but the judge says basically you didn't do something about floodplain or something like that. Remember what the deal is. But that was going to take a sewer system and run it along to the north. That is where we, our city of Helena sewer system is not in the right location for growth in the future. We almost need a second system. So that's what Derek Brown was looking at. One of the reasons he quit, it was a two-to-one vote every time he looked at something, and basically Democrats against one Republican. Now, I am a strong Democrat and I hate what's going on in DC with Trump administration. But when it comes to local stuff, it seems like the Republicans are on the right side of things. And I appreciate your comments and questions because, and actually I appreciate everybody's comments, but please, let's not do things that are self-destructive and hurt the small guy. Or, you know, just stop growth where it could be so much better. We're not alone, you know? It's just, you know, you can look at articles over and over, Missoula's struggling with it. I guess that's, I've gone on quite a bit. I was supposed to try and keep this to three points. But I hope it enlightens not only you, but the public. And again, I would stress the fact, we need more public outreach and making sure people attend. I wasn't included in any of these working groups and I don't know why. I think I'm pretty damn smart about all this stuff, but I never was invited, never knew they were happening. So I think the county should do a better job of outreach. Two, I think you need to stop this densification stuff. Promise you, it will happen organically. I'm not lying. It does. Look across the country, it happens. So let's back off. And then third, let's make the subdivision regulations reasonable to protect public health and safety and not go one step beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Hello, my name is Maxwell Milton, M.I.L.T.O.N. I live at 111 Alfalfa Road, just off Green Meadow. We're in a citizen-initiated zone, one of the racetrack meadows, type one zoning. I believe the, we don't, we have covenants, we don't have homeowner agreements, we have covenants, they were updated, I believe in the 90s. I just was looking on the maps a couple of months ago and saw that, something I didn't catch, we've been out there since 2003, that there was a zoning overlay that I think might have come in when that subdivision off of Franklin.
Could you say that again? I couldn't understand you.
Well, we're, I'm bringing this up because the county has talked about how we want to treat the citizen-initiated zones. We have, I think, 30 of them in the county. There's quite a few in that urban standards boundary. There's a bunch on our side of west of Green Meadow, there were, those subdivisions went in in the 70s. And then there's this big one off Franklin Mine Road that I think might have brought in the new, there's an overlay over about three or four citizen zones. There was an update and it maintains this 10-acre minimum that's out there, which is mainly, I think, because of water. You know, there's the Fort Harrison zoning district, which is in the area. I'm kind of bringing this all up because this little background, I was on the citizen advisory committee for the 2000 comprehensive plan update. We were going to, we were told it'd be 18 months. We spent three years because we had a lot of questions and really dug into it. Sharon Haugen at the time was staffing the county. Tim Burton was the county manager at the time. And I put a lot of hours over about five years in that. I went to joint infrastructure meetings with the city and county. Wasn't that active through the period that John just went through where all that heartburn happened and heartache and difficulty, which I think he's right. I think it still does cloud a lot of people's feeling about county government. I've been, I sat in on all the hearings, counting board, lured and panel on the zoning efforts for the valley. And some of you were there, and I don't know if Candace, you saw all that, but you were there at the end of it and you know how impassioned people were about the density, about the water issues, you know, where there is, where there isn't. With all that background, you know, and that committee worked hard with some really smart people. And in the end, they had frustrations about how we ended up with that zoning ordinance. And I just want to give the county credit for saying, look, we got to, you know, we did that 2015 plan. We identified all these problems. We realized we had to zone in the Helena Valley planning area to address them. And, you know, they said that the zoning ordinances would not be one and done. They just kept, you guys kept saying that. And I think that's right. I think these are organic documents. And I don't want to go on, and we've been here a while. Luckily, there's not 20 people getting up to talk to you. I'm glad you're extending that time a little bit. I want to get back to the engagement issue, but I really do think this is an organic document. I really want to appreciate what you've done in allowing all the public input that you did call for in spite of the fact that a lot of people haven't shown up. I think more people are paying attention than you realize. But the reality is most people don't check in on this stuff until it affects them directly. We know that. But you reached out to stakeholders, you got really good input. I think the consultants did a great job on summarizing where we're at. You know, I think I disagree a little bit with John on the density question, but I think that, you know, I think he was really speaking more to what we end up with the subdivision regulations. I really would urge you, you know, now that you have this document, to really dig into it. If you see language that bothers you, certainly flag it, but I think it's really a good document. And I think the work's going to start once you adopt it. I think the subdivision regulations, the data we get from the joint infrastructure study with the city, how we deal with the urban standards boundary, how we find ways to protect working ag lands where the farmers want to protect them. I think there are opportunities to provide a continuum of housing affordability from the smaller, and I don't mean these big apartment things, I, you know, smaller eight-to-10-unit buildings that could incorporate into existing neighborhoods where, you know, young people, single people, downsizing older people that want to be near services can live. But a continuum for the young families, the growing families. A lot of the housing in the valley is older people like my wife and I. We're not going to be there in 10 years. Those are going to open up. I looked, I was looking through the draft here and I know on, I think it's page 40, there's, I think it might be countywide, but it talks about needing maybe 4,000 housing units. I don't know if that's in the Helena Valley or in the Helena area. That's like John mentioned, those are 22 data. I would really encourage you to ask Commerce to come in and run your next meetings while you're deliberating this and get some updates on what we think we need in housing over the next 20 years. You know, the pressure is dropping some, but I believe that we can put a lot of that housing on urban standards infrastructure. And John brought it up, others have brought it up. I think the city is going to be the key. I think the city can provide a lot more housing, not just apartments. It's not just apartments or single-family subdivisions. I don't agree with that. But the reality of that is that that's what you can kind of finance right now. If you go to Bozeman, then you've seen those big apartments. I've listened to research and people that, you know, if you're trying to fund these things nationally, that's what we know how to finance. That's sort of locked in and a bank can sell that loan to a national or international investment bank. And this is really going to be important in the city. We need to kind of go back and figure out how to let the smaller developers, smaller landowners figure out a way to, and the local banks to get financing. Right now, it costs as much to do a small unit for their staff as a big one. We need to kind of intervene in that. The city, I think, is going to be key to saying, we have all these standards and issues, but we want to help, we need to be able to say yes and help people build. So where we're going to extend urban services, even if they don't build those, I think if I understand from Lindsay, and again, I want to appreciate, I had a long talk with Lindsay and Rachel at the farmer's market and I'm, thank you for providing that staff time for us to engage. And then they both came to a small meeting that some of us had organized to just understand this draft better. They did a great job addressing some of us that knew less about the history and even myself who's tried to follow it about, there's a lot of flexibility. This is really a map to get started. A lot of the concerns that are being raised are valid and we should find opportunities to talk about them. And I'm glad you're giving a little more time before you adopt this, but I think after that, we need to continue to really find ways to engage more people. And I'll just keep saying, the city, we hear the city's a culture of no, it's up to all of us people. I live in, like I say, I live out in the county, but I used to live in the city. As a community, we need to really address these and change these. We're financially restrained, we know that already. We can't provide the standards we say we want to. The roads, you know, that's causing some of the heartburn. But the federal funding is not going to be available for some of these block grants and stuff. We have this future land use, future long-range transportation plan coming from the MPO, which is a census thing, which will tell us where we can go for funds for transportation. Many of us feel we should, some of those funds shouldn't be so directed to car-dependent transportation. A lot of people don't have cars, they need to be able to walk places. I'm a big, I really think we could put more services in the urban standards boundary in the county. I think we could build up some of those neighborhoods, not just Bob's Valley Market, which could be a node. I think those are great, that's a great idea. Let's get more density, you know, out from where there can be an accountant's office, a doctor's office, a dentist's office. But that can even happen in the valley where we can provide maybe some corners, you know, that corner of Sierra and Montana Avenue that's vacant, plus the old Brother Van building there. That could be, that could be some apartments and single-unit condos and a little convenience stores. People could walk to get their milk. You know, the issues, changing zoning to allow it is just the beginning. They got to be able to finance it and make money when they do it, the people that build those things. I think those are all potentially exciting conversations to have over the next five years. And the fact that the city and county are engaged in that area, I really think we could provide a lot of housing in that urban standards boundary where there's city and still provide for rural living further out. I think the cluster idea is great. I disagree with John. I don't think that land's being wasted. I think it means if I'm a farmer out there in the Northeast Valley, I can then lease that existing remaining acreage to get a little more hay into my operation or a little more grazing for my cattle. The ag people, the county residents say we want to maintain those working ag lands. They provide services to us, they cut costs from having to get deputies out there to have to sewer all that. That's an asset for us. There are challenges to help people stay in agriculture financially, but I think we have an opportunity to try to figure that out. We're not the only place in the country struggling with this. And people with denser, you know, bigger populations in states that are having more issues with this are working out some new ways to do this that I think we could learn from. Even Billings in Missoula and Bozeman have had to deal with pressures we haven't yet. So let's get the best practices in here. And like, I think I'll just end saying that this is the beginning. I would encourage that after you have a chance to really read through this, we adopt it and then go to work engaging more people in working through workable subdivision regs, building standards, where we're going to be able to increase infrastructure, recognizing it won't be all at once. I think I heard Lindsay say that, you know, we can't pay for sidewalks all the way out to Lincoln Road, but we might make sure the rideaways are there, the bike trails are there for the kids. Needs to be a new school, elementary, new school site out there probably. We have a chance now to make sure there's trails connecting. One last thing I did want to bring up. So we're creating, according to new state law, we're creating future land use maps. And if we had more time, I'd love to call up the land use map and just, and I think next time when you ask for more input, maybe we should get that up and let people just look at it. And I would argue you could get a lot of housing there that other people disagree with. It's not just apartments. We can have those debates. But in the end, I think our riparian areas, we call them floodplains, are a super asset. There are flood aquifer recharge areas. They support lots of wildlife corridors. We have potential wetlands out there around Lake Helena. I think if we preserve those however we can find to do it, I think we need to keep people off those lands. I don't think we should ensure people live in the flood, you know, areas that are going to flood poorly. This is so hard to talk about briefly. As you know, the floods out in that middle of the valley are not on the creek. There's those, it washes out there. And if you look at that map, you go, my God, you can't build anything out there. And there's a, there's a big, I think McHugh's owned a lot of vacant land that's right in the middle of that. And we need to figure that out in ways that aren't so expensive. We're going to be limited financially on what we can pay for. The more people we get on existing infrastructure, the easier it will be to pay for it. We see sandhill cranes that we're, it took me 10 minutes to drive in here with the lights. I didn't hit a train. And we're north of 10 Mile Creek, mile from Capital High School. We see sandhill cranes almost every day. They go over the valley. You know, when this plan is being renewed in 20 years, I mean, it's going to be updated, but the 20-year timeframe we're looking at, I think we've succeeded if we still have sandhill cranes in the valley. We have people able to walk for services. We have these regional nodes where there's quality of life, better transportation options. I think this plan gives us a map to get there, but the work, I can say, the work is just starting and I encourage your involvement with us. I think we have a lot of mending to do. I've talked to so many people that whether it's the city or the county, they just don't think you're listening. I don't think I agree. I really want to appreciate your staff. They listen a lot. But there's some responsibility as a citizen to get it, you know, get informed, understand what's going on, not just show up and complain at the last minute. So I know you've been at this for three years, getting to this document, now you have it, you know? It's a great read. Enjoy your weekend and I'll look forward to your next couple of meetings as you readdress this. So I took longer than I meant to and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any further public comment? Seeing no public comment, no further public comment. Lindsay, would you come up again, kind of give us? It's my understanding from visiting with you that at this point, we're not going to do a final, by golly, we're going to adopt this. It's time, we need more input as has been stated. And so how would you think is the best way to handle this? And so how would you think is the best way to handle this? Just give me some guidance and then we are going to take a little break because Andy needs to go to the bathroom.
Chair Payne, thank you for that.
Too much information, probably, but.
Essentially, I am just looking for the commission to make some sort of a motion to table this, you know, agenda item until next Thursday, June 19th at 9:00 AM and to continue, you know, the, the public hearing into that meeting.
So by doing that, we are allowing further public comment? Is that because this is the area, this is the part of the agenda where we are taking public comment? And so rather than cutting off public comment, we would, and somebody other than myself will have to make the motion, but they have more experience than I do. I'm sure they get it figured out. So.
Chair Payne, if, if people would like, they can submit the comments to the Community Development and Planning Department. They could also email those comments. We have growthpolicy@lewisonclarkcounty@lccountymt.gov, our main email system. So growthpolicy@lccountymt.gov. They can send those directly, you know, to us. They can submit them to the planning department, either email, they can mail it to us, they can, you know, call in with comments, anything they want to do provided, or they can come to the next meeting and they can speak to you at the next meeting as well.
I was going to ask the people who passionately made their comments today and I, I believe it was Mr. Heron, suggested there are a lot of people out there who, they don't come, they don't let it, they don't talk to us. This is, it's very challenging if the only time they show up is to yell about what we've already done. We can't unring the bell. So you, you more active speakers, get out there and tell your neighbors they need to come to the next meeting, which is June, today's the 12th.
Thursday, the 19th.
Thursday, the 19th. Okay. You could, you know, rent a bus or get them to use it, but they need, we need to hear from them. We're trying to do it. You have worked so hard to get out there and get this, get the input that we really You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And if we don't hear from those people, we're going to act in, in the manner that the noisy ones want us to. Okay, so, and I'm not sure, do I need a motion to continue this public? I would like to continue it and move on to the next agenda item. So.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so this is set up just as a presentation and an update. So you have two options before you. You can certainly make a motion to kind of continue this meeting until next Thursday. Public comment remains. Even if you don't take any action and just leave it as an update for you all, certainly the public can continue to provide public comment because as this process is moving forward, next week, next week you'll presumably adopt a resolution of intention to adopt this updated growth policy. There's still going to be public comment opportunities after that as well. So the board can proceed in either way. If you wanted just to a motion to extend this meeting until next Thursday, that's certainly appropriate. But in terms of public comment, even if you don't make a motion today, public comment is still open on this issue.
Thank you. You're such a help.
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Comment as well. It's already on next Thursday's agenda, correct? It will be. It's the, the.
Are we given the proper notice for it?
The.
Agenda?
Resolution of intent, right? It's going to be on next week's agenda. That's.
Chair Payne and Commissioner Hunt House, that is our intention. We would like to have it on, on next Thursday's agenda.
Okay, so, well, we can give direction through a motion, I guess, to do that.
Okay. Let's have a, a motion.
Great. I, I will.
I knew he would love to do it.
No, I don't know about loving to do it, but I, I would move that we ask staff to put a resolution of intent to adopt the growth policy on next Thursday's agenda. And of course, throughout this entire process, we will allow for and accept public comment. We'll look forward to discussing it next week.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we continue this portion of this public hearing related to the public comment until next Thursday, June 19th. And we will see if we can get some more interested people to come in and help us shape the future of our community. Anyway, so that's the motion. All in favor of that motion?
Just a comment.
Oh, that's right. I'm supposed to ask for more comment. Go for it.
So I know we, we've kind of been emphasizing the, that there are only a few people in the room today and comment, but if you really look at this document and look at what's happened, there, there is significant comment that has already happened. So as Mr. Milton mentioned as well, many people have come to the different events, maybe not as many as we like, but there's been significant comment already there. Our, our planning staff has reached out to not only our government partners, but the stakeholders in the community. So I think HBIA, the realtors, other groups in the community have made significant comment that is already in, either incorporated in the document or it is, it is here to read. We have all of the documentation from the deliberations of the planning board and all the people that made comment there. Those are all part of our record and part of our decision-making process. So I'd encourage the commission to really look back at all the comments and the things that have happened thus far. And it's significant. So I really have a little bit of trepidation characterizing this is that we don't have anybody participating because that's not accurate. We might want more of the community to participate and that'd be great. And I, as Mr. Milton said, I think that this is just the beginning. We get this guiding document in place and then the real nuts and bolts of how we're going to put this guiding, the principles of this guiding document on the ground within our regulatory documents and regulatory programming and in our partnership with the city. That's where really it's going to happen. So I would caution us to say there's not significant participation. There is, but of course, more, more and more and more, we'd love to have more. So I'll leave it at that and ready to vote.
How many people do we have living in this county? 5,000 people?
In the county? 77,000.
Okay, and this is a county planning document? We've got 7700?
Thousand.
We've got 77,000 people?
In Lewiston Clark County.
In Lewiston Clark County?
Approximately.
So 10% of that would be significantly more than what we've had for coming. So I know it probably surprised me. I don't always agree with Andy. Heck, I don't even always agree with Tom. So with this motion, it, it being moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? This has passed unanimously? Thank you. And we are going to take a seven-minute break before we continue with 15. We don't have 15 minutes for crying out loud. We've got other things to do and, and Amy's here waiting. Okay, seven minutes. And direction. Frank?
It is still morning, so good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, County Chief Financial Officer. After completing our review of the departmental budgets and our joint work throughout this process, I'm pleased to report that we are in a strong, stable position heading into the fiscal year of 2026. Overall, departments submitted responsible budgets that remain current, maintain current service levels and operational capacity, with the exception of insurance-related, related costs and some minor fixed cost increases. Most of the departments were able to hold the line and, and preserve the status quo without sacrificing core services. Today, we are reviewing new and significant annual requests. These are reflected in all of the budgets that were presented two weeks ago and are within policy. Importantly, all departments, all departmental budgets project a healthy cash reserve balance at the close of fiscal year 2026. Each reserve either meets or exceeds our minimum target of 25% or sits just under the 33% threshold, demonstrating strong fiscal discipline. Most capital plans are also in good shape with reserves positioned to support critical infrastructure.
Frank?
Yes?
Speak slower.
Sorry.
Thank you. It's hard to understand what you're saying. It's so important.
No problem. So this is last little comment or a couple of comments. Most capital improvement plans are also in good shape with reserves positioned to support critical infrastructure needs without overextending financial position. With that, we can start a review and approval of new significant and annual requests.
Chair Payne.
Commissioner Hunt House, yes.
CFO Cornwell, just to recap what you just said.
Uh huh.
We're in great fiscal shape. And the departments did, and, and our offices did a great job in bringing in really responsible budgets. They're, they're all within our capacity to handle it going forward as well as we can sustain our current level of service. And it's a, it's a budget that is essentially status quo. Is that?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt House, yes. As of right now, as of going through the, the budget and we've done all the reviews, these, all of the requests have been budgeted for, they've been accounted for and they are within our 25% reserve mandate. And also all of the budgets are with below the 33% maximum as well. So they are within that, that Goldilocks zone that we require them to have. Also, they are maintaining their core services, no, no change in services levels going forward.
And you just said that and I knew the answer to the question, but I wanted to emphasize it because it's really important. I'm, I'm really proud of our departments and offices and budgets they've brought forward and how they've been able to maintain that fiscal discipline, as you said, and, and also bring, bring them in, bring those budgets in within the guidelines that we kind of set out for them, starting in November, ultimately in January, we solidify those guidelines and they prepare their budgets up till now. And they've done a really good job. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair Payne, Commissioners. Just as a quick FYI, remember in two weeks, so it'll be June 26th, we'll have our preliminary budget hearing. That's where you're going to see the results of all of the budgets compiled and you're going to be able to see those, the departmental work being presented and shown on how they have achieved those, those parameters with, within county policies. So this, today is more focused on the new and significant requests that, and this is an annual thing. This is, this is no different than, we've done this for many, many years. This is something we do when we transition into the preliminary budget going into, on June 26th. So this, this is more of a, a working session, so we want you guys to get a chance to go through these requests and, and give your approval if that's what you want to do.
So if I have a concern about a certain item and I don't think we should be dumping money into it, this, I can.
This is your moment to.
I can tell you this. Okay, thank you.
So the way I'm going to kind of talk about these is I'm going to do it in a grouped way because it can get cumbersome if we go line by line. We're going to start out with the All Purpose Fund or the General Fund and the personnel requests that we saw. These are new personnel requests. And so we're going to start off with the first one. We had the Noxious Weed Department asking for a .09 increase in FTE for a weed management planner. So it's, that position is at .91. They would like to bump it up to a full FTE so that they can have a full-time position. That cost the county $6,500 this year.
Frank, I, when I see a .09 increase, so they're going to, they've got a part-time person and they're going to make it a full-time? Is that?
Correct, Chair Payne, yes.
And so we've really discouraged additional FTEs for this budget, haven't we?
Chair Payne, correct. This, this is a very small, I think this is more of a, and, and this was presented during the Public Works.
Certainly.
Presentation. And they could provide more detail if you need, but this, the way I read it during the presentation, it was, this was kind of a, an item that probably should have been done a while ago. This, this person has been working pretty close to full-time for a long time and, I mean, you're only, you're .09 away. And I think they were just trying to get it bumped up to what it would, more of what it should be, more fairly. So this was a, I would say it was a minor request for a, an FTE. And just so you know, across the board, this, we're, the full, all the FTE requests this year was 1.09. So we have one other FTE request and that, that's it. So I, I would say that's a pretty good success when it comes to, when we throw out this status quo, please don't request FTE unless you absolutely need them. This is a very small, minor request. They have the money to, to pay for it and I, I found their presentation compelling when it came to the services that, that weed planner would have been providing.
Thank you for reminding me about all this. Thanks, Frank. It's very helpful. Continue, please.
And Chair Payne, just to comment on that, or clarification if I can, all of these requests are currently in the preliminary budget, right?
Correct.
So we have, if, if this theoretically, if we were to approve all of these, they're already in the budget and we know that they can be part of that. So, okay.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt House, yes. That, 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 just to make it very clear, all of these requests have been included in the budget and they do fit in within policies. So the, if, there would be no, no action, I guess, I guess a better way to put it, there's no action to be made today in order to main, in order to move an apartment or a fund into policy. That is not a, that's not an issue today. We're just, you're just going through and these are new requests. This is a very normal thing that we do.
And so when I look at the bottom line, the total, the total is $3,959,649. Does that mean it is costing us over almost $4 million more to run this operation than it did previously?
Chair Payne, good question. No, that is not the results of this. So remember I said, there's annual, there's significant annual requests. So there's a, if you look at, and I haven't looked at that page yet, the next page, this one, where the miscellaneous budget in contracted services is, when I get there, we'll, we'll go through each one of them. That's the vast majority of the, the amount that we're looking at in the permissive levy. The, these are annual requests that you look at annually. So these are already, most of them, other than the MS4, so the, the stormwater system plan that we have to implement, most of them is something that we've done in the past every year that was, we're always include these as part of the, this review. This is, it's just a standard thing. So yeah, these are not new and that, I would say the vast majority of these are not new. There's also the annual group health fund transfer that we do from contingency and the general fund.
Yes.
That's something we've done every year, but I, it's something that I think Roger and I find that is really important for you to acknowledge and see the impacts of what's going on there.
Okay, thank you. Continue, please.
No problem. Thank you, Chair Payne. The, to wrap up personnel for the All Purpose Fund, we have a request for one elections clerk. And I had a really good discussion with Chair Payne yesterday, kind of explaining where this is coming from and why these, why is it important for us to get this clerk on. Amy Reeves, our treasurer, gave a, a presentation on this before. So just to add to what she. So just to add to what she has said, there's a lot more work that has been added to the Elections Department, and it's mostly due to new state compliances, and we all know they've doubled the audit requirements, costs have gone up, tabulators are expensive, paper has gotten expensive, mails have got, mailing has gotten expensive. So the, and then the amount of hours that have been contributed to this department have definitely gone up. So this is, I mean, you could put it on the line as maybe an unfunded, or yeah, unfunded mandate from.
Unfunded mandate from our friends at the legislature. Thank you, guys.
Chair Payne.
And?
Just a comment as well, it says it on here, but some years we have only a couple of elections. Sometimes that's it, like a school election or a special district's election, which are cost a lot less and take less staff time. But in the next coming couple of years, we have four elections per year, and they're going to be significant. They already know those are coming with the general election in '26 and the primary, plus all of those local elections, city elections. So there's going to be significant increase in costs to manage all of those elections in these next coming couple of years. So just wanted to bring that up.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, yes, that is correct. I think this is a big election year when it comes to just the number of elections. And so that, as you know, it doesn't matter if it's one item on that election ballot, it's, you still have to go through the same process. I'd also, just to point out that, you know, we always have a significant number of our budget allocated towards temp salaries and overtime. We're also anticipating this election clerk coming on and helping to relieve some of those costs. This year, wasn't able to do that as much because of the four additional elections, but the, there will be an offset to having this elections clerk. So we're going to have a reduced temp time and overtime due to that elections clerk coming on. So that's, that's a good thing. So that, and hopefully, we'll be able to find some more efficiencies there.
Tom, did you have anything?
No, I see it here. These are just notifications of the things that are included that are different than what we had.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, yes, absolutely. That's all it is, is these are, these are the significant new requests that weren't in there in the prior budget. We do this every time, even though they're paid for and we have the room, we still are obligated to bring them to you and have a discussion.
Great. Oh, and also, we, you and I had a really good discussion yesterday, and you helped me have a better understanding of how this works. So I appreciate that, Frank.
Thank you, Chair Payne. And I forgot to mention this, Roger and I have already gone through each and one of these items, and, and you, as you see, there's an additional column under CAO recommendations, and the CAO and I recommend approval of all these items. So as we go through these, I will be, as you approve or not approve them, I will be marking them off and making my adjustments into the budget. So I think we, Roger, I think we would like you to take action or allow, or to have a discussion as to whether or not you want to approve these four items before we move to the next block of items.
Sounds excellent to me. Tom, do you have any comment on the first four, the personnel items that are on this? See any problem with any of those? Andy?
No, I do not. I don't, I don't know that we need formal motions of approval. I think we.
As long as we have consensus, we can keep moving on.
So I think we all agree that this is, these four have been justified and we need to do it.
Thank you, Chair Payne. So we'll move on to the transfers to other funds. We have an annual transfer to the fairgrounds. That's $50,000. That's a very typical one. We see that there every year. It's not a new item, it's just an annual request. Also, we have our annual transfers to, to the Property and Liability Insurance Fund. As you know, rates continue to rise. We have to supplement that fund with contingency money and general fund money. This is something that I've been working on. This year, we were able to reduce those amounts from, from the general fund from $200,000 to $100,000, and the annual contribution from the contingency fund from $250,000 to $200,000. Still have some work to do. We want to get that down to a more sustainable level, but going forward, and maybe CAO Bolson has something to add.
Oh, he's got nothing to say. However.
Commissioner Payne, maybe I could just weigh in with this. I believe that both yourself and Commissioner Rolf were able to attend the meeting that we had with Mako.
Yes.
Regarding property and casualty insurance. If you'll recall, it was a 16% increase for this year, and Mr. Cornwall is just taking us through the mechanics within our budget of how we make sure we fund and pay for that premium that we need to pay for, for that. So that's what this is about, just, just to a little more detail.
I also, as full disclosure, I may have a conflict of interest with this particular item because I'm, my husband is the head of the Property Casualty, whatever that is out there at Mako, and I'm thinking maybe I should recuse myself from giving my opinion on this matter. So I'll just keep my mouth shut. Go for it. Tom and Andy, do it.
It is a necessary evil, Chair, and we have to, we don't control those rates necessarily. And we, it's, this is a normal thing that we're anticipating. Frank's probably already thinking about, well, on average, over the last few years, this rate has gone up this much. He's already thinking about 2027 and what we need to set aside to make sure we can cover our, any rate increases that happen then. So this is just a normal thing that we have to do to make sure that the assets of our taxpaying public are protected from liability and property damage, those kinds of things, like the fire at the fairgrounds, those kinds of things. So, thank you.
Tom, do you have?
No, I think, you know, we have to have insurance, and it seems like my homeowner's insurance has gone up, like most everybody else's, and this is just one of those things that's, price of everything has gone up, we're going to have to absorb it.
Chair Payne, so we'll move on to the O&M items that we see, that we saw for the All Purpose Fund. So those O&M items that we saw were, one, from the county attorneys office, it was an increase in their other contracted services, and this is all related to criminal cases that, you know, we're not allowed to be privy to as to what they are and the details, but we do know that from him, his presentation, that there's a significant amount of help that he needs and experts that he needs to bring in to cover those costs. So this, this is that budget amendment to cover those costs. Hopefully, he won't need all of it, but this is a, this is a good way to make sure that he has the funds necessary.
Be prepared.
The next item is in the treasury and elections, O&M increases. Amy, during her presentation, she brought up, again, four elections. So this is a year where she has to increase her printing, printing costs and typing and binding costs, and also additional costs for other contracted services. Some of those costs will be offset by a HAVA grant. So that, I think actually all of it.
What's HAVA? Help me.
Help America Vote Act.
Oh, thank you. I don't do well with acronyms.
Moving on to admin budget, we were adding in some operating supplies for, to kind of kickstart a public, our own safety program. We talked about that a little bit in the last meeting. You know, just, just some work needs to be done. We want to make sure that the, that our citizens and our staff are safe here in these buildings. So this is to help augment a program, maybe get it started, and, and, yeah. So I don't know if Roger has anything to add there, but this is, this is the first year here, and I think it's good use of the funds, Roger.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, I think it's been well presented, but Commissioners, you know, we, we want to develop a culture of safety and maintain it throughout the organization. This is a part of those efforts, along with the, the different groups and committees that we have formed that meet on a regular basis, and that's what this item is all about. It was a request from our safety coordinator, working together with different people involved in safety around the organization. And I know you're aware of this, Commissioners, but just as a reminder, one of the goals is to develop a very efficient and effective safety plan for all of our county facilities, and this is just funding toward those goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is for animal control. This is an annual contribution that we give to the Humane Society. We usually give them what our COLA is, so they're going to get a 2% increase, resulting in $82,000. It's going from $80,000 to $82,000. Same thing with the senior citizens over at Rocky, their senior citizen program. We usually give them a COLA as well. That's a 2% increase from $220,000 to $224,000 for this year. So those are all your O&M increases. Is there any more discussion you would like to have on O&M increases for the All Purpose Fund?
Any comment, Tom?
Nope.
Looks.
Good.
Move along.
The next one is, is our annual contributions into the group health plan out of the contingency fund and the general, general fund, and at a total of $800,000. This is what we did last year. This is something we need to do this year. What's that? Oh, shoot. There's my next slide. Thank you, Commissioner. So this is a, the annual contribution, this is something that we are working very, very hard to get down. This is status quo, unfortunately. We're not going down yet with, but we are hopeful with, with the help of our actuary and, and keeping our fingers crossed that our claims rates will continue to, will go down or flatline or something, because the, the claims have just been, the last three and a half years have been unpredictably high, so the claims have outpaced what we are contributing in to the fund. So this is why we have to do this annual contribution. And then annually, we, we put aside a unanticipated expenditure line item for $200,000 for any event that, you know, the county sees that, hopefully, we don't use it. We typically don't ever use it, and, and, but it's a $200,000 kind of insurance for unanticipated expenses, annual thing that we do.
Question if, might.
Tom?
Would I be, would I be right to say that this item relates to the last item on the line, budget, the increase in the permissive levy?
Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Ralph, yes, it does relate to this, the same. Well, once we get to that line item, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more. They, they do relate. It's, yes, I'll, I'll add some more color for there, for you there.
All right. I think maybe we need to consider those all together at one time. I think, I think it's very important that we have excellent health coverage for our, for our employees. I'm struggling with the idea of, of increasing the permissive levy. So I'd like to kind of talk that all through together.
Chair Payne.
Roger, yes.
So Chair Payne and Commissioners, thank you. Could I suggest we dive into this at this point in this presentation then? And I would like to offer a few comments along with Mr. Cornwall. Commissioner Rolf, this line item that you're looking at right now is a piece of many of the strategies that we've put together for this coming fiscal year to address what Mr. Cornwall just stated, that our claims have been higher than our rates. I know that we've spoken about this on more than one occasion, Commissioners, but maybe I could just offer a few summary comments and then turn it over for the discussion we need to have here. So what we've attempted to do is bring forward a number of strategies to deal with this challenge. We have hired a third-party subject matter expert, an actuarial who has come in and give us, and given us recommendations regarding dealing with this increase. The total expenditures, Commissioner, that you may recall that we're recommending that we set money aside to deal with claims for the coming fiscal year is roughly $11 million. And the funding for that comes from rates that we charge to different participants on the plan, transfers, like Mr. Cornwall is talking to us today about, and we are recommending full implementation of a permissive tax levy that we spoke about last fiscal year as well, Commissioners. I'd like to remind you of that. We spoke in some detail about that last year, and the Commissioner's decision was to implement roughly half of what we were recommending, recommending last year with a discussion where, Commissioners, I'll just remind you that, that we gave you a heads-up at that time, that we are going to be back in front of you this year, which is now, with a recommendation to fully implement it in order to meet these challenges. So Commissioners, the other part of our strategy, if you'll remember, is that, that this year we've gone to what we've called modified experience rate with our partners. If you'll remember, on our health plan, we have some other organizations like RMDC, Mako, Pureview are on our plan, and we have gone to structuring our rates based on the claims experience that we've had with them as well. And I'm sure Mr. Cornwall was planning to go through all of this with us today as well, too. But in amongst all of those strategies, we also changed some deductibles. Commissioner Rolf, hopefully you got the email that I sent you late yesterday where Kerry DeRozier, our HR director, was able to compile some of the statistics of what's happened with some of those changes that the Commissioners agreed to this year as well. So there are a number of strategies that we've brought forward to try to deal with this ongoing challenge that we have with our group health plan. We're self-insured, as a reminder, Commissioners, but we have seen a trend over the last three years in that claims experience that has led us to wanting to implement these strategies. And I'll also mention this, that the, these steps that we're taking to make our, to meet these challenges, we still have work to do. We still have work to do over the next several years because we want to build up an appropriate reserve within this health fund. And we are nowhere near where we want to be with that yet, and we are working closely, again, with our actuarial to try to get to that point. So Commissioner, this, these actions you're looking at right now are all tied together in a comprehensive strategy that we're trying to put together. But yes, the last item on the agenda is also recommending full implementation of the permissive tax levy, and you've spoken to me about this very directly, about your questions and concerns about doing so. I guess I would also mention that many counties around the state of Montana utilize the permissive tax levy for this purpose. It is actually what it was put in place for, for us to have this as a resource to deal with this kind of an issue. So I guess I'll stop there, Commissioners, and we'll try to answer our questions for you as best we can. Thank you.
If, I guess if, if we.
I was going to respond, sort of. We have how many employees?
Commissioner Payne and Commissioners, it's just under 400. It's 396 and a fraction.
And in order to, we've got a lot of good people working for us, and in order to incentivize them to stay with our little county instead of going to the state or to the city, we've got to have an attractive compensation package and having adequate health insurance and the reserves needed to maintain that. That's part of the responsibility we take on. And I'm, we need to do this, we have to step up, and this is a good insurance plan, and I.
I like the insurance plan. I think it's important to have for exactly the reasons that you say. My question is whether it is, it is correct to just put it on the permissive levy rather than finding other places to, to pay for it from. The permissive levy, what the permissive levy is, it's, it's a levy we can levy on everybody's property tax that we don't have to ask their permission to do. And that, that million dollars is, is a significant amount of money. Is there, is there an option for where else we might get the money, is my question.
Chair.
Could you?
Do you want to answer first, or we just kind of have discussion for you?
Well, see if Frank has a response to Tom's concern.
Thank you, Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf. I will say, to, to address your question. Thank you, Chair Payne. Commissioner Ralph, I will say, to address your question, we, I think Roger and I and Kerry DeRozier and also with the help of Allegiance and our actuary, we all understand exactly what you're trying to accomplish there. And I feel like, and I've been here for just over two years, and from the beginning, everybody has tried to take the approach to not use the permissive levy. It has been a goal to refrain from using this as a tool. And I think after the actuary came on board, because we knew that we needed help into kind of understanding where we're going with our, you know, where we're at with our health plan. Here's an example of how dire our health plan has gotten. Last year, it's an $11 million health plan. That's how much money we spend out of that pool every year. We were down to $19,000 last year. That was the remaining balance. We were skimping by. We were trying to make sure that we're using all resources, anything available to get it to stay afloat. We hired our actuary, and the actuary came in and he said, "You guys got a problem." And of course, of course, he made a recommendation that we increase rates by 45%, and we said we would not do that. Can we do a tiered approach here? So we're doing a three-year healing to get our rates in line with our claims. Unfortunately, because we have exhausted all of all... I think we've done a good job with Kerry's help and Allegiance in comparing all of the plans with our competitors. We're comparing state and cities right away, and we're also including other counties around us. Our plan is competitive, but it's not overly luxurious compared to the others. It's a pretty baseline plan. We kind of... We react to what the state's doing. The state reacts to what we're doing, and vice versa. We've made some deductible changes here and there. And I think we're kind of to the point where I know we're to the point where we've exhausted everything, and we're really trying to not use the permissive levy. And when that actuary came in, it was very clear, you know, we were basically... Our hands are tied for the next year, maybe two years, hopefully not three. If claims come down and things level out like they should, then next year I might come back and just say, hey, you know, the permissive levy doesn't need to be maxed out. Maxing out the permissive levy is not something that's uncommon across other counties. This is something we see very often. Due to another county could have a huge claims rate year, and it was unexpected, and they're able to... They're actually somewhat encouraged by the state to do this, to make sure you maintain these group health plans. And we've done... And I've been impressed with how much work this county has done to try to not use that permissive levy. We've gone many, many, many years without ever maxing it out. It has saved the taxpayers multi-millions of dollars. It's just, this is just a series of unfortunate events. It was just out of our control. We've tried to do everything that we can to try to mitigate that. And I think that with the help of our actuary and Kerry's approach, we're going to get this thing healed up. We're going to get it back on track. And it's going to... And we will be able to get to the place where we can reduce the level of dependencies on the taxpayer. It's just not this year. We're just not there yet.
I just want to just reiterate. I very much like, think the plan is important. I believe that we're in a competitive situation where we could lose employees if we don't have a competitive health plan. And I think we've got some wonderful employees that need to have a good health plan. I want to keep the health plan that we've got. I just, I wanted to make sure we were thinking about all the alternatives. And I think what you're telling me, that you've gotten some experts in there to help you work with it. I see that you've changed, that you're recommending to change some deductibles, which it means that we're going to have to, you know, each of us who wind up using it are going to have to pay a little bit more if we have an incident where we go into that. But that's... The important thing is we need... I just wanted to make sure we're exploring everything before we go to the taxpayers and say, "We've got to add this on."
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, I completely agree with you. Thank you.
Okay. And again, I'm not opposed to the plan. I like the plan. I think it's needed. The cost of retraining people, if you lose key people because you don't have a competitive health plan, would be astronomical. It would probably be more than we're even looking at here because retraining people in these specialized jobs that we have, sometimes it takes years for folks to know the job. So I very, very much want, support the plan. I'm glad that you've looked at all the options, and I thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Chair Payne?
Thank you, Frank. Andy?
Thank you. Thanks, Frank. I really appreciate all the discussion and Commissioner Ralph, your sternman around this issue. I just want to reiterate that when the actuarial presented the information, the 45% was not attainable in one year. So we committed last year, and we were in this room last year in the same meeting, and we said, "Do we have essentially a plan for a three-year plan?" And part of that strategy was full implementation of the permissive levy. And from my understanding and my research, we're the only county our size or larger that does not implement it fully. So we've been the only one that's been able to restrain till this point to do that. And that is, in these other counties, it is the go-to. It is, well, how do you pay for your health insurance? You pay for it through this permissive levy that the legislature's allowed for us to. That's what it's for. But we have tried to, through other savings and, you know, not fully implement that. But last year, we committed here. Commissioner, if you remember, Commissioner Payne and I were ready to implement it fully last year, but we refrained because we wanted all three of us to agree. And we committed last year we would do half last year and half this year. So I really don't want us to go back on our commitment we made because that is the, one of the key pieces of this strategy to make this fund whole or to heal it, as you said, a little bit better. And it's going to be a while before we make it whole, as Mr. Balt said. But we got to use all of these strategies. And I'm glad Commissioner Ralph brought up that, yes, we did put more of a burden on our employees even by raising the deductible a little bit and raising the out-of-pocket fully pay. So they're contributing to this strategy as well.
Yep.
And we've compared the plans to both the city and the state. And though they're not exactly the same, they're very comparable in most ways. And so it's not an exorbitant or Cadillac plan. It is a plan that our competitors are using to keep our employees. So it is a strategy that we've committed to. It is a reality that we have to face, and I don't know that we have any other options. I think this is the best way forward, and it is the responsible way forward. So I intend to support it. Thank you.
And I have been known to make rude remarks about the legislature sending us unfunded mandates. In this case, the legislature has said, "If you need to do this, you do it." This is the exact opposite, and they've given us the opportunity. They're depending on us to recognize the need and the importance for health insurance for our employees and a way to pay for it. And this is what the legislature said this is for. And I can't imagine trying to backfill and not use this when they have so generously provided for us. I will be fully in favor of this portion.
If I might just add to it, I think it's very important that we do it. I think I like your idea of a three-year plan. Look at it hard again next year and see what we can do to make it... See if we've got the cost coming down a little bit. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you, Chair Payne. So we're just going to move on to the miscellaneous budget contracted services. So this is, again, these are items that we see on an annual basis. These aren't new. So some of them have an increased request. Some of them are maintained. So any of them that are... There's an additional note that doesn't have that additional note on the side when it's listed in the description there. That means that it's maintaining that same amount of requests. So HATS, the Helena area transit system, they're asking for the same amount as last year, $42,000. $42,000 and 300 bucks. The East Valley Bus, same thing, status quo, $60,000. CASA came in and did their presentation. We normally give them a 2% or a COLA. So they got the 2% increase to $33,000. Our audit contract, that's something that we have to pay for. That's $124,000 annually. HCTV, we have a contract with them. Every year, we give them a 3% increase. That's $171,000. Humane Society for abuse cases, this is a sad aside that we use, that we typically budget for annually at $30,000. No change there. Community Foundation at $25,000, no change there. Miscellaneous contracts, if a contract comes up that we're unaware of, that we deem that we need to take care of through the CAO's office, he'll communicate with you, see if we can use those funds for miscellaneous contracts. $50,000 is an annual contribution or annual budgeted item. Digitizing B-O-C-C books, $65,000 is an ongoing effort that we continue to work on. Symphony this year, they're asking for an increase from $5,000 to $10,000 for their contribution. They did a presentation in the fall.
Yes, but I want to talk about this particular one. Are there any other musical presentations that this county supports to this tune? This is $10,000.
Chair Payne, I'm unaware of any of them. This one, I'm going to let others that have maybe some history...
Historically, I know. But if we're going to quibble over the permissive use levy for our health insurance, maybe we could take $10,000 away from the symphony and, you know, we could lob it into our health insurance fund. But this is taxpayers' money, and I know taxpayers love the symphony. Unless you live in Lincoln or Augusta or someplace where you just don't care and you'd rather have the money go to the HATS bus system or to the Rocky, RMDC. I'm just... I think it is somewhat arrogant to not only expect the same $5,000 that they have gotten for the last 10 years, I don't know, and increase, double it. Doesn't this seem a little bit like arrogance in spending? I just don't think that is appropriate for the taxpayers' money.
Chair Payne, I have a very simple opinion on this. I don't know if it's worth sharing, but it'll be really quick. I do know, I go to the Symphony of the Stars annually.
I'm sure both of these guys...
There's a lot of commerce. There's... I'm just, I know, just from my perspective, there's a lot of commerce, there's a lot of good things that happen in this county because I know I have family members that come and visit for that.
So if we don't double it, are they not going to hold it?
I'm just sharing. You... I'm just... This is a Commissioner's decision, so...
Commissioner Payne?
Andy?
So just a little different perspective. I think that the history on it, it isn't about the music or the concert necessarily. It is about the economic development piece or the economic impact. So very much like the airport authority, we put aside $25,000 to assist them in trying to get a direct route to Dallas. We put aside another $10,000 for that direct route to Phoenix potential. Those are, they're economic drivers that bring people into Helena. This, the Symphony of the Stars is the third-largest event in the state. The only two larger events are Bobcat and Grizzly football games. They hold more people. So this one brings in almost 20,000 people, and it had about a $2.5 million impact to our community. So we were looking at the economic impact and that driver. So if we had another community group that came and said, "We're going to hold an event. It's going to bring 2 point some million dollars into the community." Even our fair doesn't bring that much in. The whole week of the fair doesn't bring that much economic development into the community. People come from all over the state to this thing. Even Lincoln and Augusta all over come and participate in this thing. So that's why. It wasn't because, oh, gosh, it's just a fun concert. Let's put some money into the concert. And that's why the city of Helena also makes a similar contribution. So they've been asked to make a $10,000 contribution because it impacts our community and all of our, from jobs to hotel rooms to meals to all of that kind of stuff. That's why we did it. Whether you agree with it or not, that's why we looked at it as an economic driver, and it's made much more significant than like a play at Grand Street, "Why don't we help them?" or this or that. I mean, those don't create this huge economic impact on one weekend. And so that's the reason we went forward historically, but I'll leave it at that. If I might, Chair?
Tom, you may voice your opinion of the symphony?
I think that this is, the symphony is the one event that brings in 15% to 20% of our total population to one event. It is, it brings in huge numbers of people from outside the community. There probably isn't a motel room available for, you know, 50 miles that night. And it is, and the other side of it is, there is not a symphony our size, the size of ours, anywhere in the country that has the quality and the type of people anywhere close. And it needs our support, and I very much support it. We do not, we have not made any increases in, I don't know how many years we've been doing this. We've made no increases from the time it was instituted till now. And this is an appropriate item, as far as I'm concerned, very much so, very positive.
In response, there is a difference between wants and needs. It seems to me a concert is a want. Roads, health insurance, all this other stuff, these are needs. And I think, and the idea that we not only give money, but now we're going to double the amount of money? Come on. We're supposed to be somewhat reasonable. If one of my kids came to me and said, "Mom, you gave me $20,000 to buy my car last year, but this year I want $40,000 so I can have a better car," that wouldn't happen.
Commissioner Payne?
Andy?
I appreciate your perspective. And when you simplify it down to, for a concert, we're going to do this? I don't look at it that way. I look at it a return on investment. So if we can make a $10,000 investment and our community gets $2.5 million back in economic activity, that's a pretty small investment and a very large return on investment. So that's where it comes from for me. If it was just like, we want to help Symphony put on a concert, I don't know that that's our role in the community necessarily. But I do think we have a role to participate in the economic drivers in our community. And we do that in multiple ways. I gave the airport examples. We do that through tax abatements when that opportunity comes up and a new business says, "We're going to create five more jobs. I want a tax abatement for this much money, and we're building a new building." We do those tax abatements for them. I don't think we've ever denied one. So in my mind, it's in those categories where we're making an investment. And what is our return on investment for our community? And if there's a good return for our taxpayers overall, they make an investment of 10 or 5 or whatever it's going to be, and they get this much back in economic activity, it seems worth it to me. So it's that for me, not about the concert as much, so.
So you said there, we got a 2.5% increase. What was the figure related?
It's about a $2.5 million economic impact to our community.
And was it last year?
Yeah, that's where we're getting the numbers.
So now we're going to double what we're giving them? Are we going to get double the amount?
I don't know that, but hopefully it keeps growing.
Chair Payne, can I add just a quick?
Certainly, Frank.
And it's been a while since they did their presentation. But I'm hard to guess or remember. I'm trying to remember. I think this $5,000 that Commissioner Ralph referred to has been $5,000 for many, many years, from the beginning of the concert. The concert has grown. It has doubled, tripled in size since that initial $5,000. The concert has grown, it has doubled, tripled in size since that initial $5,000. And I believe that was the, the sales pitch they came and presented to you saying, you know, thank you for the $5,000, really appreciate that. However, this, this event has grown so much, and, and the, the amount of economic impact has, you know, quadrupled in the timeframe that it has been here. So that was their, that was their sales pitch, I'm just reminding you of that.
Thank you.
That's theirs, not mine, but that's theirs.
I could support the $5,000, but the 10,000, the doubling of our contribution seems somewhat irresponsible, and I, these two gentlemen can pass it without me, but I, I'm not going to go for $10,000.
Okay.
I'm no for $10.
Okay. I will move on to the, to the next item then. Montana Youth Homes, it's an annual contribution of $30,000, that has not changed. We, we continue to have these Airport Authority items, budget items until our airport is successfully, gets these routes and direct routes from Dallas or Phoenix. So until they need the monies to be spent for those items, they will remain on here until you guys deem them not to be worthy to be on here. So they are on here for now, hopefully they will be successful and we will be able to...
Did we give the $25,000 to the airport last year? Or is it sitting in a?
There you go. Chair Payne, yes, it is just sitting there waiting to be used. If it's, and I think Roger can help me out with this, I think, going back to kind of remembering their presentations, is they need a way to incentivize these routes.
Sure.
And so a way to incentivize it is to show a local commitment from the city and the county, and so they requested funds to help fund the addition of these routes to the Airport Authority. If, Roger, is that the way you remember it?
Yeah, and if I could share, Payne.
But it is sitting, it's still in our bank account, correct?
Commissioner Payne, Commissioners, yes, it is in our account, the, the money will be used if and when these things come to fruition, and they're...
Unlike the previous item, which we paid out of our account, it's not there anymore. And now we're going to give them, double it up. Okay, go ahead with your presentation.
So Chair Payne and Commissioners, just before we leave that item though, I just wanted to clarify, I think if Mr. Wada Camper was here from the Airport Authority, he would remind us that there are certain rules they have to follow where they cannot directly receive funds like this, so if it ever were to happen, the intent would be for these monies to be routed, I believe he wanted them to be routed through M-BAC.
Okay.
In order to, if indeed there was any kind of success or any progress being made toward these routes, but that has not occurred yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Continue.
So moving on to the Augusta Food Share, that is an annual contribution of $2,000. We have a youth forest monitoring program assistance, we have been giving them $12,500 annually, they requested a $6,000 increase to 18.5. Again, something that we've been doing for many, many years, this is a, this is a cost increase to the program that they, I guess they just haven't asked for in the past, and so they're, they're now requesting an increase here for that program. The last item on the miscellaneous budget contract services is the MS4 program plan for the permit fee and the water quality sampling. MS4 municipal separate storm, storm water, storm sewer system. So four S's, that is, that is a unfunded mandate that is coming from the Clean Water Act, and it's a federal mandate that is being enacted on us through DEQ, I believe.
And that's, Chair Payne, that's a requirement, there's, we have to, we have to follow through with the MS4 program.
Yes, yeah, Chair Payne, Commissioner Housen, we have asked the question, if we do not follow this, there is a $10,000 fine a day. I think that would be a significant financial hit to the county if we did not follow these.
I think it's also a protection of, of the health of, I mean, talk to Dranda, we, not having good water quality or not becoming aware of when it's been, and this is all stuff we need to protect our community, and we have to, which is different. This is a need, not a want. See my difference? Okay? Continue.
All right, so on the last page, or the, I guess it'll be your second page, the, the remaining items are within a separate fund. So these are outside of the All Purpose Fund and the General Fund. These are new requests. So we will start with the first fund request was from the, or departmental requests is from the Fairgrounds, they would like to replace the burnt-down building, I guess it was a building two that burnt down this winter, with a pre-engineered building at the cost of $125,000. The Public Health is asking for, and we had a lot of discussion on this, an increase in their contracted services, just, I guess in anticipation for grant revenue loss, that was a 575, or $570,000 increase there.
So if they do get the grants, then this will not, I mean, say they get half the grants, then, then they will fill in with this, but they don't need the whole thing?
They would, correct, Chair Payne, yep. So fingers crossed, they, they don't need to use, utilize this money. We will see, I'd hate to, to, to project out here, so.
That's fine.
It's a pretty volatile world. Criminal Justice Services, they're asking for an increase of $136,000. That is a increase that is actually going to be completely paid for through the COSUP grant. I guess that is a comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance use program. Building Works, or Public Works is asking for an increase in their Buildings Department of $278,000 to pay for improvements around, for, around our buildings. The courthouse needs new sidewalks, roof, cameras. These are all paid for through their CIP. I just need, need to put it on here because it's, it is a big, big item this year, it's huge. So hopefully we get that new roof on there and that, that building will, will survive for another 100 years.
Chair Payne, just...
Andy?
Just explain CIP, they've been saving for this for a number of years, this is the year they're spending it, so.
Yep.
For those that might be watching today, so.
Chair Payne, thank you, thank you, Commissioner, yes, that, that is...
Acronym being?
Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you.
So their, their plan, they planned ahead, they have a savings account, they still have to ask you for permission to spend out of that account, so this is their, this is their big ask this year. Public Safety, they also have a, an ask this year for, to be spent out of their CIP or Capital Improvement Plan to, to replace six vehicles and, and to do some improvements through their patrol room at the cost of $253,000. The, going down with Public Safety Inmate Fund, they, they, they were successful in receiving opioid settlement funds and to help cover the cost for a doctor in the detention center. So that's $115,000. I think we've had quite a few discussions on that item. Moving on to the Detention Center Fund, they, this year are increasing their transfer into the savings account of $100,000 to help save for a security camera system. As you know, if you've been over there, I, I got a tour, and that, that system is, the one that they have now, I guess is starting to get a little outdated, still impressive. I can't imagine what it would cost to replace a, a system like that. It locks and unlocks doors, and it's quite amazing. It's going to be quite a lift to replace that. Last item, for search and rescue, they did a presentation on needing new radios. They have the funds to replace those new radios, so it's $34,000, that is a transfer into their savings account. They already had the authority to spend out of it to get the, the radios, but they needed to do a bump up this year in order to get the, the money available to replace those radios. They have the fund, it's a well-funded fund, so I, I don't see any issues there. So this is, that's all of the new and significant annual requests. There's any further discussion?
Question?
If I might.
Tom?
Now, some of these things are covered by grants. For instance, the, the, the doctor in the, in the contracted doctor in the inmate fund is covered by a, by an opioid grant, and the money, there's a grant on the Criminal Justice Services. Is, are there others that are grant-related than those two?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf? I'm not, those are the only ones. I usually try to make sure that you're aware, I make you aware if something's been paid for. I still, or I, the county still needs authority to spend those monies, even if it's coming from a grant, so you guys, you see a lot of these new grant throughout the years, so those are basically budget amendments throughout the year outside of this. We try to capture as much as we can through the budget process, we know that we miss a bunch of them, specifically with the Public Health Department, they, they get quite a bit of new grants unexpectedly throughout the year, they work very hard for them. But today, we're, those are the only two that, that were new and significant.
Anything else? Roger, did you have something?
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. I believe we're concluding with Mr. Cromwell's agenda item here. I would like Commissioners to thank you for your time. We have a clear understanding of your concurrence or your approval of these items, which is the process that we go through. Commissioner, some of these items are new, some of them are unique, or, or at the staff level, as you've gone, as you've gone through the budget presentations, perhaps as Mr. Cromwell and I, you know, listen and pay attention, maybe we would like clarification on whether the Commissioners truly support these items or not. So you've helped us with that clarity today, that was a primary purpose here. So thank you. I would like though, to mention one other thing that's not on Mr. Cromwell's list. So we've talked about the MS4 program, that mandate. We have another mandate that we've encountered over the past few months, which is that we are now part of an MPO.
Yes.
A Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I want to just mention this to you Commissioners, that in addition to what we've talked about today, I'm talking with Mr. Cromwell, HR, or some of our department directors about what we need to be thinking about in the future for a possible position to deal with these mandates associated with MS4, the MPO, maybe also the records management and archive project that we're working on. And also, we've talked about the need for possible zoning violations and enforcing violations. I'm saying all of that to say, we have been budgeting money for a couple of years for miscellaneous payroll to address zoning violations, but we're going to be working over the next few days and weeks about the possibility of needing to establish a position to deal with some of these issues that I just mentioned. I will be circling back around to all the Commissioners with full transparency to deal with all of that when the time comes. Like I say, we're all working on that as a team, but I just wanted to give you a heads up today, that is something we're, we're looking at and working on, that we may want to implement as a part of the new fiscal year as well. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Director, appreciate it. And thanks for the county attorneys sticking through this long meeting.
Chair Payne?
Andy?
Thank you, I would support that direction, just so it's on the record. And thanks for being here, guys, I'm sure it was a lot of fun. And then, Commissioner, before we conclude, just make sure we have an opportunity for public comment.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on anything? I've got to say this correctly. Public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda above. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.